Good morning and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. In attendance today, we have myself, Mark Conway, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, Councilman Burnett, representing the 8th District, Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District, Councilwoman Porter, representing the 10th District, and Councilwoman Ramos, representing the 14th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think I saw Costello floating here for a second. Councilman Costello, representing the 8th, the 11th District, and representing the Office of the President, I've got Preston Lewis, and representing the Mayor's Office, I've got Dominic MacLeary, and I've got Faith Leach in the back, our CEO. This morning, we will have our now third hearing on Council Resolution LO-23-0039, Oversight Hearing, Brooklyn Mass Shooting, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore Police Department, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood, Safety and Engagement, the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, and the Department of Transportation to discuss mass shootings that occurred on, in Brooklyn on July 2nd, 2023. This bill was sponsored by Councilmember Porter and myself. And I want to welcome everybody back to the committee. This being our third hearing regarding the Brooklyn Mass Shooting that occurred. After recessing midway through our last meeting, we're going to reconvene and pick up where we left off. First to finish, you know, some of the business that we endeavored upon, I think it was really important that we provided closure to folks who were affected personally by the shooting. So I appreciate everyone's patience, I appreciate everyone's, you know, deep sympathies and humanhood through all this. We'll begin with a line of questioning to wrap up where we left off with the Police Department, so we'll go down the line. Everyone will have an opportunity to ask a question if we did not get an opportunity to do that in our last hearing. And then we'll move on to presentations, first from HABC, then from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood, Safety, Engagement, and then finally from our Fire Department, before we open up the floor again to questionings from the council members. And last but not least, we'll open up the floor to testimony, if there is any testimony at the end. So, you know, I ask that everyone be respectful, and we have been so thus far, so I really appreciate everyone's ability to do that. I'm hoping that through this hearing, that we can come away with actionable information and make sure that, you know, we all feel comfortable learning, you know, what we've learned and know what our next steps will be. So with that, I'll start with my question. One of the big things that we spoke a lot about, Commissioner, in, you know, in the immediate follow-up of the shooting was the impact of guns on how this played out. And so we got a number of calls, of course, during the course of the event and before the event about guns on sight, knives on sight, and our response to that. Of course, we did not respond the way that we expected to, and I sort of wonder why that is? And, you know, I have two theories in mind. One is along the lines of the boy who cried wolf, or if it was a matter of safety for the officers. I'm not sure if the Police Department took the concerns seriously, and I want to maybe hear a little bit about what we know in the after-action. And forgive me, boy who cried wolf is not the right way to describe it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah. But more so that we did not take the concerns seriously. So can you tell me a little about what's going on there and what we know about the impact of guns on some of the decisions that night?
Well, first, the officer's safety could be an issue, but we have plenty of officers. So if it was, was an issue, we could always ask for additional resources, which we all know didn't happen. The way it's supposed to work and what happens is when you get a call and it's really generic, like groups with guns, it doesn't really give us a ton, but we still should have went into the area to investigate. Now, if it's different and we have a description that gives us the reasonable articulable suspicion to possibly stop someone, because even, even though we get the calls, they were calling for help for us to go in and address the issue. Usually what will happen if that, the officers are trained when they go into an area, because we run into this every day, when we go into the area, the person who usually has the gun is going to separate themselves from the group because they want to get away with the gun. And there is certain characteristics that they'll use that will indicate to the officer that they have a weapon, which they can articulate and lead to a stop and lots of times the recovery of a weapon. Because weapons are heavy and they, they usually aren't in holsters when individuals are carrying them, so they're going to behave in a certain way as you walk and as you move, basically like security checks. So those are the things that the officers look for, but the fact that they got calls for it and they didn't go in. Now, when they get discharging calls and the helicopter says it's fireworks, that's an indication that they saw fireworks, but the officers can still set up a team to go in. And usually what happens if they, if they go in, people with the guns don't want to see the officers, so they're going to start, like I said, separating and move away. So just their presence could have abated the fact that some of the men and women that had weapons would have walked away and probably left the area.
So I'm curious, you know, how often do we get broad, sort of not very detailed calls like that? And how typically do we handle those? Because I would say, and I'm not an officer, I'm not dispatch, I don't know what kind of calls we get every day, but if I got a call saying that there were tons of people with guns and knives everywhere, I'd want to check that out. I'd be concerned about the safety for folks in that area. But we didn't get that response. And so I'm curious if, you know, we talked about in the last hearing, this term indifference. I'm curious if this is something that we hear often, such that we are desensitized, or if this is, you know, just in this area and in this particular neighborhood or neighborhoods like it, we, we don't take it the same way? So I'm not sure, forgive me if I'm not asking this question as neatly as possible, but I want to get to why something like this was not taken with the level of gravity and seriousness that I think anybody in this room might have expected in that moment.
Honestly, that's what I want to get to, too, because it shouldn't, it should have been handled differently. It's handled differently every single day. Our officers get calls every single day, not for eight or 900 people or hundreds of people armed with guns, but we get calls every day and they're actually increasing, where people are calling us and telling us who has a gun. I think I read, because I read our Evertell, which is our message system, last week, we had two or three calls where citizens called and said this individual had a gun, gave us somewhat of a description. We stopped them and sure enough, that individual had a weapon. So we are getting a lot of those calls. Now, if it's, if it's kind of generic where it's just a large group or something like that, it doesn't give us the, the ability to stop them, but like I said earlier, that person who's usually armed is going to separate themselves from, they'll usually indicate who's armed by who walks away, or who runs. I mean, that, that's a common thing. As soon as the officer shows up, they start running because the person whose arm doesn't know what information we have unless, of course, they have a scanner. But they don't know what information the officer has. Somebody could have called and said this person and gave a complete description that allowed us to stop them, or they may even know their name. We've had calls like that, numerous calls where somebody will call and say such-and-such has a gun, they stand on the corner, and we roll up and they just start taking off. So it should have been handled much differently, and that's what we're going to get to the bottom of with the internal investigation as to why the sergeants didn't take charge and the lieutenant didn't take charge.
No, there was also, in the back and forth in that moment, in the report, I remember noting a sentiment from the higher-ups that they didn't want officers to get kind of sucked in, or I forgot, I forgot the exact terminology, to what was going on. And in my mind, and I'm not sure if anyone else thought about this when they heard it, my thought was, was there a fear of the safety for the officers in that moment, such that maybe we should have gone about approaching it with some different level of approach? You know, we go into, and you're, you're the Commissioner, you know this very well, we go into very tense situations all the time. We have a SWAT team specifically for that. If it were so tense, we have different ways of handling those moments. Could safety have been one of those considerations? And how, how would we think about that, should safety have been one of those considerations?
Well, it is, it is always in consideration, but it's our job.
Yeah.
I mean, who else is going to do it? I mean, being honest, it's our job to go in there and face the danger. That comment was okay on one condition. You were waiting for more cops so that you can make an entry instead of just one cop going in there. But that second part of that statement never came. It was just stay on the outside, which leads me to believe that they, well, I know they didn't ask for more cops. If he says stay, and we do this all the time, where we'll know there's a group of individuals who may be doing some nefarious activity, our, our officers will stage somewhere and go to the point where they, they come in from different angles because they know people are going to run. So something like that should have been done, or at least, even if they call every single officer that was working that night, it's 12 cop cars, 12 police cars that were working in the district. 12 police cars is a little more impact than one or two, and they can come in from different areas because their people were going to disperse, and that's really all we wanted them to do. We, we didn't, we, we could have investigated everything, but officer safety's an issue, but in the end, that's what we get paid to do. But not to ask one cop to go in there by himself, obviously if somebody is shot, because I've had to do it myself where somebody was shot, and you've got a really rowdy crowd, but your job is to go in there and, and if you have to move the person or render aid, that's what you have to do, and the troops are coming. There's times or in situations all the time where you may be fighting with somebody and there's one or more people you're fighting, and the only thing you have is the radio and the sound of sirens that are coming to help you. But in the end, that's what we get paid to do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, I actually want to go back to the original timeline. In the after-action report, it was mentioned that there were respective foot patrol officers that were, responded to the calls for service as early as 9:00 AM that day. So I believe there were eight calls for service. There was one related to, one, I think one related to like a reckless vehicle, and so ideally, the officer would have gotten out the car, inspected the area. Is that correct?
I believe we may, actually made a DWI arrest on one of them.
Okay, okay, so perfect, a DWI, and that was about .2 miles from the actual incident?
I think so.
Okay. And so walk me through that process of the situational awareness of the officer that more than, I believe it was 800 to 900 people at 12 o'clock. Walk me through that situational awareness of how the officer did not see those individuals gathering throughout the day, leading up to 800 people, one, well, .2 miles away from the, from the incident site.
Well, they did see.
Oh, so they did see it?
I'm sure they saw. You can't, you couldn't go through Brooklyn with the amount of cars that were parked, the amount of people that were walking to, even when I got to the scene, which was probably an hour after it happened, people were still walking away. So the, the excuse that we didn't know is not an excuse. We knew starting at 7:00 AM, they were starting to set up tables. There's tables set up that they're going to have Brooklyn Day. The sergeant that worked the 3 to 11 shift has been through Brooklyn Day many times. He knows what Brooklyn Day involves. They didn't escalate it to anyone. They kept it to themselves until, I think, 10:45, when they told, hey, Brooklyn Day is here, and basically they were going home because their shift was over and he had already called them in.
Okay.
So that's the activity we're looking at, but there's no excuse that we didn't know.
Would you consider that negligence?
I don't want to put a word to it because there's a charge for those certain things that Public Integrity Bureau charges, and I don't want to taint the investigation because what happens is Public Integrity does the investigation. If that person goes through a trial board and there's a ruling in the trial board, it comes to me for the final decision. So I don't want to put any kind of, say anything about the investigation, especially if I'm going to have to be the, the final person to rule on it.
Okay. Okay. Next, I want to ask about the spatial awareness of 911 call operators, BPD, and also the Fire Department, when calls come in. From my understanding, all of you all sit in a respective room in Baltimore City Police Department, is that correct?
Well, what happens is in the 311 operators, the operators are there and the dispatchers are in a room, they're all in a room together.
Okay. And so they're all in a room together, so theoretically, one would have heard the amount of calls coming in, the call volume coming in, and they would be, the dispatcher would be hearing, the BPD dispatcher would be hearing those calls coming in?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, okay.
I, I would say this is definitely not on the dispatchers, because the calls come in during the day, they might get 1,000 calls in Brooklyn, and the dispatchers, the way the dispatchers work, they work 40 minutes on and 20 minutes, I believe it's 40 minutes on and 20 minutes off. So for 20 minutes, a third of the hour or a portion of the hour, they're not sitting there. But they have to handle calls throughout the, the southern districts. So calls coming in sporadically throughout, and they notified supervisors that things were happening. It's not on the dispatchers.
No, I'm not saying it's on the dispatchers, but from my understanding, there was actually a supervisor in that room as these calls were coming in, is that correct?
He is, but he has, they have all nine districts. So basically, the way it's set up, the dispatcher supervisor is sitting at a table like that, and all around him are the nine dispatchers that he's getting calls throughout the city. So he can look at those, but if, as the rate that they come in, I mean, towards the end of the night, it was obvious what was happening. But he, he or she, whoever it was, is overseeing the entire city, and sometimes those things don't jump up to him. It's, goes back to the officer on the street who's handling that district.
Okay. And my last question, Mr. Chair. Does that happen, so Fells Point, every year, they give a big Halloween party right in the middle of like, you know, the square. How many people are in, at that Halloween party every year?
Probably a couple thousand.
Couple thousand? Okay. And so last year, I believe there was an incident, what, how long did it take for BPD to get on scene at that incident last year in Fells Point?
I don't know, I'd have to look at that. But probably not long because we had officers deployed there for the party.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
We're going to start this way, Councilman Burnett, then Cohen, and then we'll come back around this way.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Commissioner, so there was a, a map provided at the last hearing that sort of, I guess it was a heat map that looked at proactive patrol versus where the calls for service were. Does the agency know where other parts of the city that are like that are, is your equity officer looking at other parts of the city to see where there may be mismatches between the services that people are asking for and the proactive policing work that occurs? Because I, you know, I would, this is a single post, surely cannot be the only post. Is that something that's reviewed by the agency?
Yes, that's, as part of this, we discovered the, the issue with the post. Now, that was corrected somewhat with redistricting, but that doesn't mean it's perfect, because we thought the posts were perfect before, but they've been 60 years. So what we're going to do is we're going to examine this probably every six months to a year and see, are we giving, like, I can already tell you, there's one district that is getting hit a lot harder than any other district. So I can tell you, we're going to have to probably change some things there in the next six months to level it out. So we are going to continue to look at those things, and if we have this in Brooklyn, where else do we have it? And that's, that's what the equity officer is going to do, to see if there, if the, our police services are distributed unleavenly anywhere else in the city so we can correct it.
Okay. And that's something that I think would be helpful at a future oversight hearing, just to see what other areas that are red flags for you all and to better understand what accountability measures are being put in place to ensure, because this, obviously, we agree that that's not the only place that this happens. The other thing that stood out to me, why are fireworks deemed not needing a response? You know, that was something that stood out to me in reviewing the report, in that we get complaints all the time, every Fourth of July, every New Year's, and so is that the protocol, that if people call for fireworks, that they just should not expect the police to respond?
No, we, we'll respond. It's kind of difficult to confiscate them. We can confiscate them, but then what we have to do is we have to have, we have to set something up where we can store them, because we can't submit them to evidence because they're fireworks. So there's something, if we're going to start, like for Fourth of July, there's been times where we set something up with our, our SWAT team, who is actually the best ones at disarming certain things, because some things have to be disarmed, some of the fireworks that we see. So something like that, we would, we would do that, but quite honestly, in Brooklyn, we hadn't really done enforcement on fireworks anywhere else in, in the city at that time. So if they were having a party, that's kind of natural for people to set off fireworks, and as long as, as long as it doesn't get terribly out of hand, the fireworks, it's something that we, we don't usually respond to or enforce a whole lot.
Yeah, my concern is, I mean, just reading the report, it was very clear that between the fireworks and the large nature of the event, that the folks who are just sitting in the house trying to enjoy the evening probably felt just under siege, which would match the calls for service. And so, you know, obviously, absent the violence, this still seems like a pretty chaotic place to be, and it would just be our expectation that like, when people, when something like this is coming together, and obviously, I understand, Fourth of July, you would just be running around chasing your tail, trying to find every firework going off, but I think there's a delineation between that and hundreds of people lighting fireworks well into the evening, absent the violence, that's still pretty chaotic to have to deal with if you're a senior, if you're somebody who has to work overnight, you know, you have small children. I mean, I just couldn't imagine both, you know, if that was my family, what that would be like to just sort of be calling in for repeated fireworks, repeated large gathering, and there's just nothing coming from the Police Department.
The fireworks, I'm actually okay with our response to the fireworks. I'm not okay with our response to the underage drinking, the disorderly conduct, the people armed with guns, the large crowd gathering that is disrupting the rest of the community. The fireworks was just one aspect of it. I mean, you see the one video where the, the guy's driving through the area and he's got his like four, four or five-year-old son or daughter hanging out the window of a sunroof, and they're, they're shooting guns. So all of those things.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Are, are, are extremely important, because we got 12, 13, 14, 15-year-old kids drinking, smoking marijuana. I mean, lots of, there was lots of bad behavior taking place in there that we should have addressed.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not saying that this was the worst thing that occurred that evening.
No, no, I get you.
It just stood out to me in reviewing.
Yes, sir.
Last question, the, if, are there red flags or sort of automatic flags that pop up if there are a certain number of calls decline to an area? So in this instance, there were a number of, of calls for service, there were obviously repeated, and repeated incidents in which the responding officer, there's no calls for service, there's no reason to respond, or I, I don't know the technical term. Does that trigger anything at 911 or in your office to say, look, we're declining a lot here? Is there, does a supervisor get a notification, just trying to figure out what happens in that scenario?
The dispatcher can escalate that, but we had supervisors there that were the ones not going to the calls. And the, the lieutenant, who was the gold badge, who was supposed to be overseeing the district, was nowhere in sight. And the captain was also, had to recover, had to respond to three different districts that, he was overseeing three districts that didn't escalate it up or didn't hear it, or whatever, whatever happened. So the supervision was there, it was just a lack of doing your job.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner, and to all your folks. Look, I do think this city, to sort of pick up on some threads that have been brought up by my colleagues, I do think that we need to develop some clearer protocols for how we respond to large gatherings proactively, because we're seeing this in all the districts. Fells Point has been brought up a lot. Essentially, post-pandemic, as you are well aware, it became the hangout spot for thousands of people, and that's great, but when folks started open-air drug dealing, selling liquor out of coolers, urinating publicly, we also know that we're a city that has an inordinate amount of guns. And so having huge crowds of people, whether it's in Brooklyn, Fells Point, Edmondson Village, outside a shopping center, wherever, it is inevitable that in many of these cases, we are going to see some form of violence. And in Fells Point, for a while, it was pretty horrific. I mean, we had a couple mass shootings there as well. It did not rise to this level with 30 people shot, but it took a huge amount of effort by your officers, community, the main streets, my office, just a ton of coordination to gain some semblance of normalcy. And so to me, the question that is begged, and I don't think this is unique to Baltimore, I think Philadelphia, other cities are experiencing similar challenges, but I think in this sort of post-pandemic moment where we're seeing across the country a lot of just chaos and disorder, I think having some really clear protocols for when we have large gatherings and they're unpermitted, we got to have a plan for how we're going to address it. And usually, we, we know in advance and we're hearing from community or from council or from other folks that this is going to take place. And so I just think, to me, there is a need to develop some really clear protocols so that there's not any kind of differential in response, that there is, you know, all the equity concerns around one part of the city versus the other part of the city, but just that we need a plan for when this happens, because it's going to continue to happen. And I do think that having some police officers, having sheriff's deputies can just mitigate the exposure to risk and the exposure that, you know, multiple people start shooting.
Yeah, we, we actually have a protocol, it just wasn't followed. I mean, we, we have a, and we can, we have a number that we set to it that's 50, but that doesn't really mean anything, because sometimes 20 is out of control, sometimes 200 it's not. It's all depends on each circumstance, but there's a protocol that should have been followed when, first of all, we know how large Brooklyn Day gets, so that, that becomes a large party. We were there last year, we knew how large it got, they had their party with police presence, and we monitored, and they, they had their, their Brooklyn Day, and everybody went home safe from what I can remember. And we could have done the same thing this time, had we done it quicker and earlier in the day and had officers move there. We can, we can respond and mediate or stop certain things. We stop parties, every pop-up events, every single weekend, every single day almost during the summer, before and post-pandemic, and during. But sometimes if, if you've got to rely on supervisors to escalate it up to the duty officer. We had all the correct supervisory levels in place, they just weren't followed that day. And 99 out of 100 times, it's followed, and we quash the problem or we monitor it to a point that when it's over, people go home safe. On this one, they didn't do it.
Sir, can I, can I add to that, too, just a bit? For the record, Michelle Wirthsberger, Chief of Staff. So we did have a procedure, it wasn't written down, and you know that when you're managing people, if it is not in black and white, if it, there is nothing that you can point to, you know, it's squishy, right? And so we immediately took pen to paper, wrote it down, we're in the process of finalizing it with the monitoring team DOJ, but it is crystal clear who, you know, what responsibility folks have, you know, at what junctures, how do you use the cease and desist order, you know, how do you escalate, when do you escalate, what does that look like, so that there is no mistake next time? So next time it isn't squishy, that everyone is clear what the expectation is, sir.
No, I appreciate that, Chief Wirthsberger, and that's really what I'm looking for, is a written, clear set of guidance and just a policy, because, again, I, I hear you, Commissioner, on sort of this as an individual failure of systems, but we see this a lot, and I've dealt with it, I know my colleague in the 8th District has dealt with it in parts of his district. of systems, but we see this a lot. And I've dealt with it. I know my colleague in the 8th District has dealt with it in parts of his district, like these large pop-up scenes. And it, it's chaotic and I think it's also hard for individual officers there as well. I know it certainly was in Fells Point because it feels out of control. And so I think you all having, just from a policy standpoint, like really clear guidelines and protocols and this is what we do, so that it's not the individual supervisor on the scene having to make a bunch of tricky calls where, you know, and we talked about this a lot, Commissioner, before you were Commissioner, where you don't want something to escalate, right? You don't want officers to intervene in a situation where they put themselves or others in danger without needing to, but if you allow chaotic crowds where there's a ton of alcohol and likely guns to go unchecked, then we know what it leads to.
No, I, I, I mean, I, I think our whole team wholeheartedly agrees, right? Police work is, is, has a lot of discretion in it. And if you have a new officer or a tired officer or supervisor in a situation that we know if we don't make the right call at the right time, it can escalate. You know, we need to make sure that they understand the parameters. And, and frankly, you know, and you've seen this in your district, and I know I've personally worked with many of the folks on the council over the years on similar types of incidents. But if you have someone who, an officer who has not had the experience, who doesn't know how it can go or any of the tools that we have in our toolbox, then that puts that individual at a disadvantage, which puts the community at a disadvantage. So this SOP, you know, will work for everyone so that someone doesn't have to, you know, be creative, you know, necessarily in the moment. They will know what tools they have available to them. And first and foremost, you know, further down the chain, the first tool is call your supervisor.
Yeah, no, I just, to put a fine point and close it out, I just, it is a really different form of policing and it requires a level of skill and nuance and tact and relationships. And, you know, in Fells Point, we've seen it done well and we've seen it done not well. And we've had issues where some supervisors were, have been great about really maintaining a peaceful, joyful, respectful scene and also holding people accountable for individual behaviors. And then we've seen some where the officers just stand together in a clump in a group and it doesn't go well. And so I think just having clarity around this and really internally stressing that this is what we do and this is what we don't do, I, I think can go a really long way, not just in South Baltimore, but across the city. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, what's the relationship between the police department and HABC when it comes to public safety and understanding what's going on in the HABC properties?
It, it's usually pretty good and it was, it was excellent when our former major was, was the security head, but I think he left several months ago and I believe they just replaced, replaced them. But we have a good relationship where they notify someone in our office if they have issues on HABC properties.
So what's the protocol? So if there's something that happens on HABC property that you get the call, you inform HABC and vice versa? Is there a timeframe in which the call has to come in? The reason I'm asking is because the fact that HABC was informed at 3:00 AM rather than, you know, as calls were coming in, that there was an issue, seems to be problematic.
Well, at, when the calls came in for the shooting, the officers, medics, everyone was occupied.
Of course, absolutely.
Preoccupied with getting, with getting them, the people to the hospital and getting the scene under control because we didn't know how many shooters we had and we didn't know if the shooters were still on, on property. So we would make a call, but it would, we would make the call once it was, the, the scene was, was calm and we had the scene under control. And when I got there, the scene wasn't still, still wasn't.
Understood, but I think, you know, your officers started to understand what was going on prior to that happening. So there was no call made to HABC at all?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. I have a lot of questions for HABC and I'll just wait for that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner and Chief Wurzberger, we've heard a lot about training and, and training of officers. And I'm curious about the training for commanders, specifically for majors and captains. When the previous major in the Southern District was promoted to this post, I raised the concern privately with members of the, of the Commissioner's staff about that individual's experience and whether or not they had the appropriate training and experience to lead a patrol district. At the time, I was told that this, that the police commissioner at the time felt that this was a good development opportunity for this individual. And I wanted to, one, better understand what training is provided for individuals who are placed at the head of a patrol district, either in the number one or number two slot, who have not previously held that post, recognizing the previous major was a major, but in a totally non-p patrol function within BPD. Understanding that and ensuring that in the future, when promotions are made to place someone in the one or two slot in a patrol district, that they're not done so because it's a good development opportunity for that individual, but because they are the best person to be the number one or number two in that patrol district.
Yeah, well, I'm, we're, I'm sorry, were you done, sir? Well, we're developing something now for training with all of our supervisors because we give it to our officers. We give it to, officers have to ride with field training officers for, I think, 10 weeks, some, some number like that. And we're going through now where, when, as soon as, we don't have it approved yet because we have to go through all the processes with DOJ, consent decree to get our policy approved. Sergeants, lieutenants, captains, majors are all going to be shadowing another person of that rank for at least four weeks to see what they do before they go out on their own. Because you're right, we put everybody out there. Once you're a supervisor, you're out there. But we give them incident command training. The, the major that you're, you're talking about has been to numerous city events as in the incident command room, multiple times with Brooklyn Day, all these different things. But also he made a decision that was very quick at, I think, 11 o'clock at night. I don't know what he was doing. I know he wasn't working. So he had his supervisors working the street escalated that to him earlier, I think things would have been different. But he made a quick decision and unfortunately, it should have been a different decision. But our commanders, and this is part of the thing that, that I've constantly pushed and I'm going to continue to push, probably more so than anybody because I came from patrol and patrol is the backbone of the department. I'm going to ensure that patrol is the backbone of the department. You have to go to patrol. When you get promoted to sergeant, you go to patrol. When you get promoted to lieutenant, you go to patrol. When you go to captain, you go to patrol. When you go to major, you may go to patrol at one point, but you've already had that experience as the captain level is the number two person. Now, it's different when you're the number one person and it all falls on your shoulders because it, it does change. But we can't put members at a disservice by not putting them in a district when that's the toughest job. And that's where most of the captains and major spots are, is in operations. So we've got to train them. But the biggest thing is they work as a sergeant, a lieutenant, and a captain. So we don't have somebody that hasn't been on the street in a district for multiple years now running a patrol shift or a patrol sector or a patrol district. So that's the big push there is that we don't want people with, with less training. We've got to get everybody trained to the point that whatever job they take over, they're prepared to take it over. Even when they do the four weeks that we're going to do, if they're not prepared or they don't feel they're ready or a person riding with it, they don't feel ready, then we give them more time. It's not, it's not something that we have to cut off at four weeks. It's the same with field training for an officer. If they're not ready, they can get extended. So not everybody learns at the same level, but we have to invest more in training of our supervisors because that's where we don't do as well as we should.
So to the Commissioner's point, when it comes to the training for commanders, one thing that we've been doing for a while now and is sending them through either IACP, the International Association Chiefs of Police Trainings, we've been sending them to SMIP, Southern Management Training, and other, other various academies like FBI Leader. And when it comes to crowd and how we deal with the dispersment and the dressing of crowds, be they large or whatever, we, through the academy, are sending multiple commanders through a command incident training currently. And my push has been for the last month identifying those commanders who have attended and those who have not. When I say commanders, I am not speaking specifically of patrol. I am talking of all commanders. Because between different incidents, you may have one patrol commander as the incident commander and the deputy incident commander may be someone who is non-p patrol. So we expect the same level of training and expertise or from my experience in 2015 with the civil unrest, there may be times when one commander is pulled away to one incident and then the other commander has to be the incident commander for another. So we're sending them currently through that training. I myself and Lieutenant Colonel Herzog now is going through a second one in reference to sports management training in reference to the large-scale events. I went with this with Chief Wallace probably several months ago. I know Lieutenant Colonel Herzog is in it right now. So we're pushing this through all of our commanders. Myself and Director Blyther are also going and being a part of 21st Century Policing Leadership, which is focusing on emotional intelligence. So we're pushing as many trainings as we can to our commanders to get them to be as proficient and professional as we want them and they should be for public service.
Is it, Mr. Jones, is it Colonel or Deputy Commissioner now?
It's Acting Deputy.
Acting DC, got it. Acting DC Jones, thank you and Commissioner, thank you. I don't know that that answers the question that, that I asked, but what I'll say is that we've heard a lot about training over the past few years and training seems to be the, lack of trainings or inefficacy of the training seems to be the excuse when mistakes occur. This was obviously a mistake. And at some point, when we've invested so much money and time and resources into training, we expect to not hear that as the justification anymore. The individual who was previously the major in the Southern was put in a position where he was not going to be successful. Something was going to happen at some point in time. It is tragic that this is what that was in order for a change to be made. I'm hopeful that under your leadership and, and Acting DC Jones' leadership, that promotional decisions like this will be reviewed very carefully in the future so that we don't have another situation where an individual is put in a role where they cannot be successful. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Commissioner. We're, we're going to turn over to HABC for their presentation before we move on to Monsi, to the Fire Department, and then open to further questions. So Ms. Abrams, floor is yours.
There you go. Good morning. Good morning to the council members. I am Janet Abrahams, President and CEO of the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. I am here today to discuss the Brooklyn Homes incident, our findings and recommendations. I have with me today our Executive Vice President of Operation, Monica Watkins. I want to start out by saying our hearts and prayers continue to be with every victim, family member, and resident. As we reported along with the mayor's administration, we conducted an internal review and identified key findings and recommendations. Our after-action report was incorporated into the city comprehensive report and is also available on our website, habc.org. In summary, we found that upon notification of the mass shooting, we followed our routine emergency response and coordinated with city agencies and service providers. We also identified key, key recommendations, some of which are, are already in place. Monica Watkins, our EVP of Operations, will review our findings, recommendations, and progress to date. As you will see and hear from the presentation, it will demonstrate we are taking these actions seriously and most importantly, we want our residents to feel safe in the community they call home. We want residents and their families to enjoy spending time with each other and their neighbors. It can be done in a safe and fun manner. We will continue to inform the city council, the mayor's office of any updates we, and we look forward to working with all elected officials to help communicate important messages and resources within our communities. I am doing the opening statement. I will turn the presentation, the actual presentation, over to Monica Watkins. Thank you.
Good morning. I echo the sentiments of our President Janet Abrahams and thank you to the council for having us here today. Part of this presentation will cover very briefly the timeline, the findings that we discovered, our recommendations, and then the current status of our plan of action. As has been noted, HABC was notified at 3:00 AM on the morning of the incident. From that time, we mobilized as an agency and we coordinated efforts across our internal organization as well as preparing the community center for others to come and conduct operations and support. We continued the support through the dates indicated through our Office of Resident Services as well as our management team. And we still continue it today. Our findings. Upon notification of the mass shooting, we followed our routine emergency response and coordinated with the city agencies and service providers. We believe that a more efficient coordination process among all of the agencies involved could have been realized by establishing a joint information center from the beginning. We also realized that the requirement for prior approval for indoor and outdoor events as defined in the lease was not included in our governing document, which is the Admissions and Continued Occupancy Policies, otherwise known as the ACOP. We also realized that there needs to be a more coordinated effort for large-scale events. Our recommendations. Prior to Brooklyn Day and the mass shooting, HABC had already initiated several safety and security measures for all of our developments. And we started with a pilot for security and that also included an expansion of what we call our Security Operations Center and contractual armed security at each site. There is an emergency after-hours number. It's unique to each development. That is, has been widely known because they get it upon signing a lease, but we're now continuing to make sure it's publicized so that they know to utilize this number. And this is an eighth, a third party that manages after-hour calls for any issue for HABC. We will however, explore additional avenues to increase residents' awareness. We also use that third party to review the after-hours emergency response efforts. We also use that third-party to review the after-hours emergency response efforts. And one of the things that we had prior to this time was an emergency response plan. We have since dusted that off and engaged that third-party to come back and help us, especially under the lens of Brooklyn Day, help us to update and add to that emergency response plan. We will, of course, convene our staff for this emergency preparedness, and that will include exercises to include active shooters and mass shootings. We are also updating our guidelines to ensure that prior written approval is obtained from the chief operating officer or the designee with HABC's executive office prior to a resident or a third-party holding an outdoor event that is in HABC's common areas. What we have completed to date. Again, we initiated several safety and security measures for all of our developments, to include the expansion to the rest of our developments. All of our developments right now have contractual armed security at each site. Again, we're updating our guidelines to make sure that everyone is, who wants to hold events on HABC's properties, receive the prior approval, the necessary approvals. What is in progress is that third-party review, and we have met and we have identified a timeline by which we will begin to, they will begin to review how we responded to Brooklyn Day, how we have implemented the plans since we last met, and what we need to improve going forward. And again, the after-hours number will be widely promoted to each site to make sure, since it's a unique number for each site, to make sure that they know how to contact HABC in the event of an emergency. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. We're going to keep moving along and have the presentation from Monty.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Mavronas, Interim Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, for holding this important hearing and providing us an opportunity to discuss our after-action reports following the July 2 mass shooting incident that took place in the Brooklyn Homes community. Monty understands that what took place in Brooklyn Day has deeply impacted the Brooklyn Homes community, and that it's an area where residents have felt neglected by their city government for decades. That had to be part of our response, and something that we'll be talking a little bit about in our presentation today and in our report. The trauma felt by our neighbors in Brooklyn Homes has reverberated across the city. We know 18-year-old Aleah Gonzalez and 20-year-old Kyla Svagbemi were killed, and 28 others were injured in the largest-scale mass shooting incident in the city's history, and the response, which we continue to be engaged in, speaks to that. In line with the Mayor's commitment to Baltimore and the agency's task of implementing a public health approach to safety, Monty has devoted itself to showing up for the community and everyone who's been directly or indirectly victimized by the mass shooting, and to do everything in our power to ensure that what happened on July 2 never happens again. Let me see if I can. Yeah, got it. Thank you. All right. I'm going to start with a very brief agency overview. As the agency responsible for the implementation of Baltimore's first-ever Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan, Monty is charged with coordinating citywide efforts to reduce crisis levels of gun violence today while addressing the long-term underlying factors that drive violence in Baltimore. Our work covers three interconnected direct service lanes, gun violence prevention, victim services, and community engagement and opportunity. In the hours following the July 2 mass shooting, Monty activated a 45-day coordinated neighborhood stabilization response in Brooklyn Homes at the direction of the Mayor and City Administrator. This was our largest-scale response to date. This stabilization response was tailored to the magnitude of the incident and the particular needs of the Brooklyn Homes community. It differed from previous activations in that it required immediate sustained resource deployment, a focus on integrated victim services, and unprecedented scale to address the widespread trauma in the community. First, I'll give a brief overview of our agency's after-action report. We'll cover the timeline of events as well. Over the past two months, the agency has taken some time to assess the results, outcomes, and impacts of our CNSR activation, which is a constantly evolving process by design. We've reviewed internal inter-agency and community coordination and collaboration protocol. We've also reviewed our internal and external communications. Our after-action report is the culmination of this internal assessment and feedback received from residents over the course of our CNSR. The initial phase of CNSR, which mobilized over 60 partners to provide direct services out of the Brooklyn Homes Community Center with a focus on onsite therapeutic services, coordinated victim services, and trauma-responsive care. Our second phase, which related to ongoing services, really starting to do that work of transferring some of the leadership to our community-based partners who would carry this forward to today, want to again give a shout-out to Councilwoman Porter for being a great partner in that effort. Victim services in Brooklyn Homes, the agency had more than 370 people who signed in at the recovery center and outside of the Peace Mobile. Not all of these individuals were direct or indirect victims of the incident, but we did have requests for connection to services, and that's a role our team has been playing. Primary and secondary victims of this mass shooting incident were able to access coordinated victim services, with Monty joining our partners at BPD and the State's Attorney's Office onsite. And our after-action report also covers the Community Violence Intervention, or CVI, work both at Brooklyn Day prior to the mass shooting and in the weeks after the incident. This includes the work of Safe Streets. I'll go ahead to our timeline. Let me see if this... Thank you. All right. I'm going to start first with the agency's response timeline, and then we'll move on to Safe Streets. You'll note that the agency's response timeline begins post-incident, so in the early hours of Sunday, July 2. Starting, I'll highlight a few things here, and you can see the full details in our after-action report, which can be found on our website and as part of the Mayor's comprehensive document. By 3:00 in the morning, Monty's Communications Associate Director followed up with BPD's PIO for additional information about the incident. We heard that they were on the scene of a mass shooting incident and made contact there. The Communications Associate Director then contacted me, our Victim Services Associate Director, and our CVI Deputy Director with this information. By 4:44 a.m., City Administrator Leach provided a directive to Monty to stand up immediate stabilization resources in Brooklyn in response to the mass shooting. By 7:30 a.m., the interim director, myself, notified agency staff about the mass shooting and asked the team to be on standby for a coordinated neighborhood stabilization response. Additionally, I made contact with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhoods, OEM, and Councilwoman Porter to begin solidifying details associated with the response. By 12:00 that day, Monty was fully activated and on the ground in Brooklyn Homes. I was identified as the incident commander for the recovery center at the Brooklyn Homes Community Center and worked in close partnership with Chief Wallace and the team at OEM, really to coordinate inter-agency efforts there. City agency directors and designees met at the Brooklyn Homes Community Center between 1:00 and 2:00 p.m. that afternoon. And agency leadership began immediately assessing the impacted area, reviewing open service requests in and around Brooklyn Homes, and assisting with emerging needs. By that evening, the early evening, the Mayor's Office, Monty, and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhoods developed a plan for what that first week was going to look like, and we provided onsite resources for that first week and a half. I'll turn now to Safe Streets. So you can see that Safe Street staff, as previously reported, violence interrupters were present at the Brooklyn Day event prior to the incident. Brooklyn Homes falls within the Safe Streets Brooklyn Sites catchment zone. Between 8:00 p.m. and 10:30 p.m., these violence interrupters mediated or intervened in a total of five situations involving individuals attending Brooklyn Day. No shots were fired in any of the five conflicts and/or interventions. Each of the mediations and interventions were successfully resolved, with two requiring follow-up to ensure that certain conditions for resolution are met. For the record, when a conflict is resolved, as long as certain conditions are met, this means that the parties involved have agreed to a compromise, and as long as both uphold that compromise, the conflict will remain resolved. The following timeline shows that Safe Streets violence interrupters were there to do their job, leveraging their credibility to mediate conflicts and intervene before potential incidents escalated. So as early as 3:00 p.m., we know that two Safe Street staff arrived at the event. A few mediations occurred in the evening hours. By 9:00 p.m., additional staff from other Brooklyn posts from the site joined at the event. By 11:00 p.m. at the conclusion of their shift, all Safe Street site staff left the event between the hours of 11:00 and 12:20 in the morning. By 1:00 a.m., once the Safe Streets Brooklyn Site heard of the shooting, staff members immediately returned to the scene, while another staff member went to the hospital where victims were being treated. And then site staff remained onsite or at the hospital with victims until approximately 5:00 in the morning. They were back the next day to join and be a part of the onsite response out of the Brooklyn Homes Community Center. I'm not going to belabor this slide or the next, because I think we covered it thoroughly in the first hearing, but once the incident took place, as mentioned, the Mayor, City Administrator, and Monty leadership, in consultation with Councilwoman Porter, made the decision to activate a 45-day coordinated neighborhood stabilization response. You can see on the next slide, some of the partners that were a part of this mobilization. I want to publicly thank, again, everyone who appears on this list and the many other individuals who supported. The outpouring of support in the hours and days after this incident was amazing, and I think we couldn't have done that response and shown up in the way we did for and with the community without that. So just want to say thank you. Well over 65 partners were activated during the response. There was discussion in the early days of the response about what comes after 45 days. This slide is meant to illustrate some of the things that have happened after that 45-day period. There has not been an end to our work in Brooklyn Homes. Members of my team who joined me today can definitely share more information about that. Coming up this Saturday, we actually have a Healing Day in partnership with Let's Thrive Baltimore onsite. We did a community-led resource fair earlier this month, and so just to show that our work is ongoing and we're committed to ensuring that city government stays connected to this community, and we build on the relationships that have grown stronger as a result of this mobilization. All right. So I'm going to cover a few of the findings from our after-action report. Our after-action report outlined nine main findings and related recommendations in two categories, the role of Safe Streets, and then also in terms of our mobilization and inter-agency coordination. The first one that is highlighted here is that their finding was that there are only informal practices regarding when and how Safe Street staff share knowledge with Monty Community Violence Intervention staff about large events or potentially emerging threats to public safety in their catchment zones. Our recommendation was to formalize this and to make sure it's in black and white, to update the CVI Standard Operations Manual, something that was brand-new with this administration, to expand the criteria for when Safe Street staff escalate information about potential incidents. As far as our status, we've made a lot of great progress this month. We've been engaging in really good conversations with our site administrators and site staff. These are the individuals who are going to be tasked with adhering to this and implementing it. So to date, we've received some good feedback, and we are on target to ensure this policy is finalized by the end of this month, with implementation happening in October. What I will share is that even since having these discussions, we've seen an increase in communication between our sites and our agency, and we want to keep that up and think that two-way communication is extremely important. We also saw a finding that there's some public confusion about the role of Safe Streets Baltimore in the model itself. To that end, our recommendation is to increase public communication and awareness about the daily work, what the model is, what it means to function as a credible messenger with those at highest risk of gun violence. When we're talking about neighborhoods and areas where Safe Streets operates, we see a better understanding amongst the public about what they do and how it works. For example, the survey of Brooklyn Homes and the surrounding community that the Greater Bay Brook Alliance did reflected that residents trusted Safe Streets far more than they trusted city government and far more than they trusted police. And so we see that in communities where Safe Streets operates, but we want to grow that understanding. All right. Just my last two slides here around mobilization, wraparound supports, and coordination. A number of our findings and recommendations were in this area. The first was that coordinated neighborhood stabilization responses, they're constantly evolving. I mentioned that this was the largest-scale response we had, and involved not just local partners, but a number of partners at the state level and even beyond. This work is relatively new, and so we learned a lot through this. And our recommendation was that we wanted to update our process map, which governs this process, to ensure that all of our protocols are consistent, that we understand within our team who's responsible for what, and fundamentally that we're building redundancy, so that if one member of our team is out, that doesn't mean that something doesn't happen, that we all know exactly how to move and who is up next. Part of that, we concur with HABC's recommendation around the helpfulness of a JIC for future CNSR activations, especially at the scale where the situation is changing day by day, also ensuring that dates and commitments are locked down and promoted to stakeholders and residents at least 48 hours in advance. There was a lot that was happening in real time, but we want to make sure we're constantly improving, and we definitely see areas for improvement. And then our very last slide here, we connected with 167 residents who expressed some level of need. Of the 98 requests for relocation and/or housing assistance that Monty received throughout the course of the stabilization, 86 of those were from residents of Brooklyn Homes. To date, Monty is providing some level of case management support to 19 primary or secondary victims of the Brooklyn Homes mass shooting, and those needs range from relocation assistance to ongoing mental health supports. The team is here to speak to that in more detail, should there be an interest. Part of this work has led to deeper integration with BPD and the State's Attorney's Office Victim Services teams. Our teams have already started meeting on a regular basis to review and coordinate around cases. That's something I'm really proud of and something that hasn't always been the case as far as victim services in Baltimore. And so we want to make sure we can build on that and expand beyond this incident to other incidents for integrated victim services. I think I'll leave it there and look forward to your questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Mavronas. I'm going to turn over to Chief Wallace.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Chairman Conway and honorable members of the committee. My name is James Wallace, and I'm the Acting Chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department. At the time of the occurrence of this incident, I was the Emergency Manager for the city, Director of the Office of Emergency Management. First, on behalf of the Baltimore City Fire Department and the Office of Emergency Management, I would like to extend my condolences to the many families affected by this horrible tragedy and to the Brooklyn community. Please know that all of you remain in our thoughts and prayers. The Fire Department received the first report of a shooting at approximately 12:35 a.m. Sunday morning, July 2. Within five minutes, our units began to arrive upon the scene and determined that the scene was spread over a six-block area. Despite the high background call volume, BCFD firefighters and EMS clinicians provided triage, treatment, and transport efforts during operations, which resulted in nine patients being transported from the incident scene to Shock Trauma and the University of Maryland Medical Center, respectively. This incident involved significant interdepartmental and interjurisdictional collaboration with EMS units assisting us from Baltimore County, Anarundel County, Howard County, and Maryland Express Care Ambulance. This mass shooting location was also a two, was part of a two-part incident, with the initial victims being found on or around Hernan Court, but also at Harbor Hospital, where a secondary and additional triage, treatment, and transport was set up to facilitate inter-hospital transports and relocate many of the victims that had gone to Harbor Hospital to more definitive care at Shock Trauma. This proved to be challenging to those involved, including our 911 call-takers, dispatchers, and our many other care providers. In the subsequent days, the Office of Emergency Management stepped up to assist with recovery efforts. efforts, assisting with the coordination of local Baltimore City, private, and some state resources. The following PowerPoint presentation, which Chief Mattz, the Assistant Chief of EMS, is going to present, provides a high-level brief in regards to the actions taken by both agencies. Our hard copy, however, takes a deeper dive and provides a more in-depth, provides more in-depth findings with regards to shortcomings of both agencies as well as recommended improvements. This information results in a chronological order of information that was presented to us through CAD, computer-aided dispatch, personnel interviews, and radio traffic. I'll now ask Chief Mattz to come up and present the 911.
Good morning, Chairman Conway, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. As Chief Wallace said, my name is James Mattz. I'm the Assistant Chief of EMS for the Fire Department. I'm just going to have a brief slide presentation to go through and explain some of the high points of what transpired. As Chief Wallace said, there was multiple agencies within the city that responded, not only the Fire Department, but of course, police, Office of Emergency Management, MONC, Housing Authority, and the Department of Transportation. There we go. Thank you. All medic units were in service at the time of the incident. Suppression units, there was three units that were closed on the other side of town due to personnel, and then a truck was closed due to some mechanical issues. In addition to that, prior to the event, there was actually four calls for service into the Brooklyn Homes area. The units in service at the time of the incident, there was actually five medic units, including the closest medic unit to that incident, as well as 24 additional suppression pieces apparatus. Now, during the actual incident, there was 30 specific calls for service from Brooklyn Homes, and over that duration, at 12:00 midnight to 1:00 in the morning hour, there was over 300 calls for service. The total Fire Department units deployed at the time, there was a total of 18 unit responses. Six of those additional were supervisors. There was four suppression units and a total of eight medic units. In addition to our resources, I'm going to take a step back and just make it a real quick point. There's no jurisdiction in this area that can handle that many shootings without help from our partners, whether it's Baltimore County, Anarundel County, Howard County. In this case, our partners were able to help us. We had two units from Anarundel County, one from Baltimore County, two Howard County units helped us, and then two additional privates helped us when we were doing some of the interhospital transfers that were required. From the first incident at Herndon Court, a total of nine patients were transported. All of those went to shock-trauma. And then, what as Chief Wallace had said, the mass casualty or the incident transferred to an incident at Harbor Hospital, where an additional six patients were interhospital transported to shock-trauma for additional treatment. As we've gone over multiple times, there was a total of 30 patients. 28 patients were gunshot victims, two were medical that were taken to other locations. The hospitals that received these patients, obviously Harbor was the closest and received a lot of the patients that were transported to the incident by bystanders and police as well. I think it was a total of 16 patients. Shock-trauma received the lion's share of the patients. Anarundel Medical Center received one patient that was transported by personal auto, and then St. Agnes and University of Maryland took the two medical patients that we had at that incident. As with any kind of a large-scale incident, the Office of Emergency Management stepped in and collaborated with additional agencies to offer, activated the Community Resource Center, offer mental health assistance when needed, and engaged in community outreach. In summary, we couldn't have done as well as we did from an EMS perspective without the collaboration and partnerships with our other agencies as well as other jurisdictions. The Office of Emergency Management stepped in, and Chief Wallace, if you want to just take a step and just tell them what...
Yeah, so, as I said earlier, in subsequent days, it's Emergency Management's job to jump in and begin to coordinate the Resource Center, resources coming into the Resource Center, organization so that it's purposeful and beneficial to the community. We worked with MONC as well as BPD, the Fire Department, Councilwoman Porter, a lot of teams, a lot of volunteers came in, but it was a very heavy lift to organize that. So OEM remained there in the subsequent weeks until such point MONC had gotten things stabilized there from a Resource Center perspective, and then they pulled back.
And that was the conclusion of the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you to the remaining agencies. Chief Mattz, thank you for walking us through the Fire Department's presentation. We're going to open up to questions for all the agencies. I'm going to start off with one of my own. One of the things that actually we talked a little bit about in our first hearing, and this question is for HABC, was about the sort of neighborhood relationship coordination. I would say it's pretty apparent we expected our police department to have a very strong relationship with the neighborhood, certainly something we know we need to work on. I think we also expect that HABC would have a strong relationship with the neighborhood. I think one of the big, big, big opportunities, I think the President brought this up before, but when we're thinking about how we respond to these things going forward, have we thought much about how we can instead help as opposed to responding to events like this? There are going to be community events across the city. Of course, they're going to be in our HABC sites. Have we thought much about whether or not we can partner with some of these community organizations and maybe help do so in a way that is more coordinated, of course, safer, and sort of meets the standards that we expect for events happening on HABC properties? That's for you, President Abrams.
So, I mean, the answer is yes. One of the things that we have been doing, we have tenant associations at all our sites. We also have a resident advisory board who governs the tenant association. The Housing Authority fund those associations through our operating funds. We work extremely close with the residents through those organizations. The situation at Brooklyn Homes, it happened right after we swore in the new tenant association at that site. We have since then been working with her and her slate, which is her VP and Secretary and Treasurer, to ensure that we develop a stronger relationship with the residents there. Prior to her tenure, we did not have a tenant association. We had a, when I came here in 2017, we had a very strong tenant association who worked closely with the Housing Authority to plan events for those sites. We, the Housing Authority, participated in those events. We knew in advance when the events was going to take place, and then, of course, we notified the police department when we had the intel. When the tenant association went defunct, our property management team and our resident services team work with not just the Brooklyn Homes, but across the entire Housing Authority to engage our residents in different activities and what have you. So, yes, we are developing stronger relationships, not only with the residents, but also with some of the community organizations within the communities that we serve. And with a stronger tenant association, we expect that those relationships will become a little bit more stronger as we move forward with what we're doing with that group. But we rely heavily on our tenant association because they are the eyes and ears at those communities.
So, interestingly, in this instance, you mentioned our tenant association was defunct or not operating well at the moment. And, you know, I've been thinking a lot about, of course, what happened on Brooklyn Day earlier this year, but then also what we want to happen at the next Brooklyn Day. And so, you know, part of the timeline you put up there started, I think, at 3:00 AM when we were officially notified of the shooting. But I sort of think, you know, in an ideal world, that timeline began as soon as last year's Brooklyn Day ended. We had an opportunity to start working with tenants' association or anybody else to help stand up that event and make sure that it was run well. So I'm curious to that effect, have we thought much about what this looks like in the future? And what resources does your team need to make sure that we have an effective, safe, fun Brooklyn Day or any other day across the city with our various housing opportunities? How are we thinking about that, and what resources do we need in order to make sure that we can be effective in making sure folks are safe in the future?
So I did want to make one clarity. In 2022, we did not have a tenant association at that site. We found out about the event because our safety officer at the time discovered a flyer. And with that flyer, we were able to notify the police department that this is going on. You know, in a perfect world, the Housing Authority wants to notify, we do everything possibly to make things work smoothly. We notify the police department because we have that relationship. Moving forward, we do have the security, the armed security that's walking those properties. Nine times out of 10, in situations where we have unsanctioned activity, we're hoping that we can get our hands on flyers, we can get our hands on any situation on the social media. But when we are aware of any type of events, we have a protocol in place, and we follow that protocol. It hasn't changed, has it? Until we bring the safety officer on into the agency, and Monica can talk a little bit more about that timeline. We rely heavily, as I said before, on the residents to notify us and to follow our process. That is why it's important for us to ensure that we take the application process back to the residents to talk about what needs to happen when you intend to have an event on the site, because that triggers how we respond to that event.
I appreciate that. I think what I'm asking here is a little bit more...
Broader? Because you want to know whatever?
No.
I know it's broader.
It's a little bit more strategic, particularly because we know events will happen, and if it's too difficult or too inconvenient, folks will not take the proper channels to host those events effectively. And then it puts us in a policing situation where we're trying to catch events. It's a whack-a-mole-type situation. What I'm proposing here, and I think what I would really like to see us begin to think through for resources, for operations, is a situation by which we provide an attractive solution for folks who want to host events. So if we are going to provide support, help with permits, resources, some funding to make sure that those events are run well, and we have better eyes on what's going on, we can make it attractive for folks that are trying to host events. I don't know what that costs. And so I'm asking, I'm asking you, you know, and maybe you don't have the answer right now, but to think a little more about what that might look like. If, for instance, there was an incentive to work with HABC to host events every year, one event, we can help you with 500 bucks, 1,000 bucks, 2,000 bucks, I have no idea. I think that's a conversation that I think this council would be willing to have in our budget discussions. But if we can make it an attractive option for folks to take the proper channels and not just come with the stick if they don't, we're not forever trying to chase folks around who are hosting, you know, unsanctioned events. Do you understand what I'm asking?
I welcome, I honestly welcome any type of funding active because that's one of the biggest carrots that you can use to have people to really fall in line and follow a process. So I'll be more than happy to speak with each council representative for our areas to see exactly how we can work together, as you said, to make events happening on our properties more attractive. We do, with the tenant association, HABC does provide resources and funding, but for outside events, sure, I would love to have that conversation with the council.
Sure. So I'll make that a formal request of the committee. If you guys could take, how much time do you think you would need in order to do that assessment or analysis?
As to what it will take to...
Cost, operations, what it may mean to your team.
Yeah, let's get, we have, you know, we're facing, I'm in the process of the major government shutdown, so can we do, let's say, three months?
Three months is fine.
Okay, perfect.
The other question I have is regarding the 24-hour hotline for folks to call. I'm curious, did we get any calls to that line in the course of that day?
Monica?
Thank you, Chairman. So, we did not. One of the things, one of the first things I did was to call the third party and ask her to send us every call that happened from July 1st through July 2nd, and she did not respond with, actually, that's not true, one for refrigerator repair, and I forget the other one, but nothing related to this incident.
So my sort of concern here, I know we noted that this is a number widely shared. I'm not convinced that that is enough. And clearly, for an incident like this, no one using it, I'm not sure people understand what it should be used for. I don't know how many calls we get a year. My guess is not many.
No, we get thousands.
Yes.
We get, we get a lot.
We get thousands.
Okay, thousands. So I'm really curious, why on this particular day, we got none?
So I do think, when you look at what are emergencies, and so they have it on their refrigerator, they get magnets when they move in with the phone number, and what are emergency, gas leak, fire, you know? So they're looking at those things that address the property. And that's why we are now taking it back on the road to say and add to that, when, you know, incidents and that kind of thing. But when you look at the actual sticker that they have on their refrigerator, it talks about gas leaks, it talks about fire, it talks about water issues, it talks about bathroom. If you have two bathrooms and one is out, that's not an emergency, but if you have one, you know, that kind of thing. So that's what we were focusing on before. So we're going to change it now, add these things to it, and we're going back out on the road with new refrigerator magnets for them, but we're also taking it to social media, our management offices, and that kind of thing. So we're going to use every means necessary to get it back out there.
So this is less a hotline for nuisances than it is for emergencies for folks living in the homes?
Exactly.
Got it.
Exactly.
So I think that probably explains why we didn't get any calls. People don't see this line as that avenue. And if we intend to use it as that avenue for large nuisances, large gatherings, loud noise, safety concerns, so on and so forth, I think we're going to have to do some work to change people's understanding of what the line is for. I think to that effect as well, there is, I think, a real gap between what our police department knew, or rather, what our 911 call center and dispatchers knew, and at what point you guys would be notified. And I'm really curious, you know, where that could, should, or will happen in the future to make sure that if there are things happening on your properties, you are properly notified. So if you need to send someone out there, if you need to do any investigating, that additional help can be made. Now, of course, there's work for the police department to do, and there's work for you to do, but there were calls coming in all day, and I just don't know at what point we would, you know, properly notify HABC. So that question for maybe our 911 call center, dispatch, or even our police department?
If it's on their property, they should have, our officers could have reached out, and I don't know if, I don't know if they did. I'd say they probably didn't, but I'd have to look into that to see.
Okay. Yeah, please.
Well, no, I mean, typically, when we had the safety officer, of course, he was more entrenched in the process. But we deal directly with each one of the offices and the commanders. We develop relationships with them, and that's how we are notified. In this particular situation, it's an anomaly, right? And so we have to figure out how to make that a little bit more succinct. We get most of our notification through emergency management. So emergency management, they do notify us once they have the information and they look at the address and see that it's one of HABC's site. And so they will call us, we're on the list, and they notify us. And that's how we were notified. Should, you know, we're working, again, when we get the safety officer onsite in the agency, that's one of the areas we hope to close the gap.
Thank you. And then last piece of this...
Not to interrupt you, sir. That's who bridged the gap between, like Major Hans, when he worked for him, he had relationships with all nine commanders and everybody in the agency, pretty much. But that doesn't mean it has to be somebody from within. They can establish the same things because it's only going to be a help to work together.
Right.
Appreciate that. And then just sort of last piece for this, this is over the weekend. There's no one working at HABC on that site during the weekend. So how would we have responded if we would have known?
If we received the call, what we had at our hands, and Monica can talk about how that works, we already had armed security. They were at four other sites. They were at Latrobe, they were at Westport, they were at Poe, and there's another one, and Douglas. So we have the ability, based on the contract, to move them. As we did when we were notified of another event that was taking place the following day at Cherry Hill, we already removed our security to ensure that they respond to that particular event. So we had the ability to do that, and we could have done that.
So, and my question's here, what could have or possibly should happen in the future? Our police department finds out about it through a 911 call, they go out onsite, they also see the party going on. They notify somehow someone at HABC that's sent through the proper channels to our private security. And then private security should work with the police department to bolster whatever response we would have.
Exactly. That is the relationship we're forging.
Okay. Do we have that sort of memorialized anywhere, or?
If you mean, have we talked with BPD and actually put it in writing in an SOP? No, but we can. We have, like I said, we are expanding the Security Operations Center within HABC. There was one position, now there'll be two. Once they're onboard, they're going through background checks now, then we can make sure that that is sort of solidified between our agencies.
Thank you. Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you so much. This question is for Director Abrahams in HABC. How many cameras do you have on the Brooklyn Homes property currently?
We currently have 16.
16?
Yes.
How many within their respective area that the incident occurred?
I'm not 100% sure. I'd have to check with CityWatch to be sure, but there were quite a few in the area.
And are those cameras running 24-hour? Are they panned cameras? Are they...
They're PTZ, pan tilt zoom. They do run 24 hours unless, of course, there's some sort of malfunction.
And are they motion sensor? Like, do they consistently move? Are they moving by motion?
It depends. Even though they are HABC-funded, CityWatch cameras, we do not maintain control over those cameras. That's within BPD CityWatch. So if they decide to put something, take something off a tour and put it just, you know, focused in a specific area, then that's something they would have let the Security Operations Manager know. So that he would know, like, if they're doing something. And that's not intel that we would necessarily have because they're conducting some sort of observation. So it depends.
So just to confirm, those cameras that are on HABC property are managed by CityWatch?
That is correct.
Okay. And so I'm going to come back over to you here to BPD. With regard to CityWatch, what is the protocol for persons kind of manipulating or maneuvering those cameras?
It all depends. It's usually several that are working. They've got, I think it's over 700 cameras that they have access to. They'll periodically check, but usually what they do is they'll listen to the radio. And if there's something hot going on on the radio, they'll log into those cameras and look at those cameras. Or the officers can ask for CityWatch to look. But there's also members in the BCICs that have access to those cameras. There's people in each district that have access to the cameras. So they can pull the cameras up and monitor them, and they can take control of them. Obviously, if somebody already has control, you can't overtake theirs, but...
Okay, so just so I'm clear, personnel, when they're looking at the CityWatch camera, they are hearing what's happening on the radio, and then they go in to manipulate those cameras to see kind of what's happening?
They can. It doesn't, yeah, because they've got radios, so they listen to the radio.
And so they listen into the radio. And just to confirm, every person has a radio, every officer has a radio, is that correct?
Everyone in CityWatch, but there's usually, because of the amount of members, there's usually only three or four working every shift.
Okay, so why didn't they respond based on the CityWatch camera? If we knew that the individuals were kind of going earlier, turn of the day at 7 o'clock, they were obviously on CityWatch cameras, they were listening to the radio, why weren't they escalated at that time? Like, I'm trying to really identify different levers that were missed, so not just the bottleneck of the patrol officer, but there were multiple systemic effects that were dropped. And I'm trying to, I haven't really heard a solution of or indication of why those balls were dropped.
They notified the supervisors that were on scene that there was a party happening. They were watching it. At one point, they were watching it and panning the camera.
So they were watching it?
At one point.
At one point. What time?
I think that was 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock, somewhere in there.
7 o'clock in the morning or 7 o'clock in the evening?
They knew how many people were there. They got, if I'm not mistaken, one of the supervisors got an estimate from CityWatch on the crowd, plus they got it from Foxtrot on the amount of people that were there.
So Commissioner, I want to be very clear. There were multiple balls dropped during this day. We all read the after-action report. I am not sufficiently satisfied that we're hearing why those balls were dropping, how we're going to rectify those issues moving forward. Increased patrol is not simply going to solve the issue. There need to be a clear, concise, standard operating protocols on multiple fronts within multiple agencies that are spearheaded by BPD. Every agency that we are talking to is directly coming back to BPD. So I need for you all to really understand that if you all have policies in place, they need to be followed. We said earlier in the hearing about we didn't have a documented protocol for large groups of gathering over 50 people. That's incorrect. That's incorrect. There was a mass shooting in Carroll Park two years prior with 200 people, where we sat in this chamber and talked about a written protocol that was supposed to happen, and those officers were supposed to follow. This is not an aspect of just having officer indifference. This is a clear aspect of not following the rules, and lives are being lost.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a quick question on, to Director Abrams on HABC. So you noted the security, I guess, the pilot program, there's folks moving between locations. Are there, over the weekends, so just so I'm on, I clearly understand, so there's no staff on the weekends, no property manager, or anyone that would typically be working, I guess, from what time to what time, Friday to Monday?
So the staff leave the properties on Friday at 4 o'clock, 4:00, 4:30. And they return Monday morning at 8:00. However, if there are emergencies, so we do have on-call personnel. So if there are emergencies, they are dispatched to the site to take care of the emergency. As far as the new security, if I'm not mistaken, they do work on weekends now? Am I correct?
The pilot didn't have them on weekends, but now they work.
So, okay, so the pilot didn't have them on weekends, but now they do work weekends. And they are not driving through the properties? They're literally getting out their cars and walking?
Okay. And so I guess my question for, I guess, the inter-agency response, because my concern, obviously, I understand staffing, people have to go home at some point, that makes sense. If there's, what is the response then, or the expectation that, you know, because my thought is like, all right, we have this large event here, there's hundreds of people. Obviously, we know that there was laps of communication within the police department already. But, you know, say there's a large-scale fire or something that's happening, I guess, your staff isn't there. There may or may not be security. What is, on this side of the train tracks, what is the protocol in which HABC staff should be notified? Like, what are the types of conditions that they would be called? Or I don't know if that's for you to answer or the police to answer, but...
Well, for fire, I can tell you that we are notified. Emergency management notify us when there's a fire, whether it's a small fire, large fire. Our emergency team is dispatched to that particular site, and they work with BPD, the fire department. And we work with the emergency management to ensure that we're responding. So that protocol is already in place.
Okay.
Even with gas leak, we already have a system in place, BGE, they notify us, we're onsite. So heating issues, anything that happens that's major, we have staff to dispatch to those emergencies.
And we also notify them, like, for example, if they have a house or a residence that we do a search and seizure warrant, they'll get the paperwork because they can do an eviction if necessary, if there's illegal drug activity or if there's people living in the house that's not supposed to be there. But we also work through OEM, and well, Chief Wallace before he changed roles. But we work very well with the coordinated efforts with them. If it's a shooting or a homicide, everybody will get the notification.
That was my follow-up. So shootings, fires, okay.
Yes.
Is there consideration for large events that may not sort of fit that criteria to alert HABC?
We should have alerted them, but it wouldn't have been quite as large had we done something earlier.
No, I got it. I just, I think, you know, they would probably want to know, like, there's still 700 people here, whether it's totally peaceful. I think that that would be sort of a fair thing to say, hey, because obviously, it's still in violation of their policy around unpermitted events, unnotified events, because had you known about it, there may have been staff there, is my understanding or my guess?
For the Brooklyn Homes situation? No, we would have dispatched our security.
Okay.
Yes.
And we would have run in with the legal DJ, we gave him a cease and desist order, which we do all the time, and tell them that they have to stop. And if they refuse to stop, we can make an arrest. Because you have to have permits to have the DJs and the loud music and everything else that's going on there. So there's pilot processes in place that we can make them stop. And we do, we've done it before and after multiple times all throughout the city.
I think, you know, to this point, so what the PC is saying is, you know, we have the relationship now. We've rebuilt the relationship with HABC. I have personally contacted the VP. I've been in contact with the PIO on some other incidents not related to Brooklyn Homes. So we have that relationship. Recently, I reached out to all district commanders requesting that they make themselves familiar with all individuals in HABC, as well as just recently with the Tenant Association identifying those individuals who are the representative for that. Going forward as well, through our communication system, normally when an officer or supervisor is on scene, he does not have sometimes the capacity to make a phone call because he's dealing with decisions. So normally, we give that to communications because they're in a different kind of climate and environment where they can make a phone call. So the request is made for communications to make all necessary notifications. So HABC and their 24-hour number and hotline and reference to their personnel will be added to that contact list when it is HABC property.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cohen?
Mr. Chair, thank you to all the agencies present. I want to start by just giving some thanks to Mark and his team for the neighborhood stabilization response. You know, also to, of course, my colleague, Councilmember Porter, who I know was there every single day. I heard really great things, and I think that's something that, as a city, we should lift up when there is positive feedback. We know that trauma begets trauma, and it is very easy for folks who have been hurt to then turn around and hurt others or self-harm. And the fact that you all were there in such an intentional way, and that those services, both mental health, just support for people, I think it makes a big difference. And it's something that I am proud of, and I think that we should be proud of as a city. So I want to thank you for that. I want to ask specifically about some of the protocols, and you mentioned this, Director, in your opening, around Safe Streets. I do think that it is fair for the public to have questions. In these types of incidents, when Safe Streets are present and something catastrophic happens, I think it is fair for folks to ask what went on that led to this incident. So I'm very clear that individual Safe Streets frontline workers need to be extremely careful and thoughtful in how they are engaging relationships with police, that part of the model relies on them to be credible messengers and to not compromise their credibility within community. And that takes a level of thought and sophistication. However, MONC and the agencies also need to have really tight relationships with law enforcement. And in these types of incidents, I think, in the same way that BPD has to be much more present and has to be just clearer about what the response looks like, I do think there is a coordinating role for MONC in some of this, led, like my colleague said, by the police department. But that there's a lot of energy and effort going into the Safe Streets program, and that I think one of the things that it can and should do is be the credible messengers that raise the alarm bells and say, like, this is not going well. And again, I get that that can't be always calling 911, but I do think that there is a role for those workers in raising the alarm. Because clearly, this thing escalated, and it escalated over a period of time. It didn't just, it wasn't just all of a sudden, people started shooting. And so I wanted to hear from you all how the agency is thinking about the role of Safe Streets workers in preventing these types of issues from escalating. And again, I want to be clear that this is not to say that Safe Streets should be stopping people, arresting people with guns or anything like that, but that I think there should be a role for them as an in-between. And I'm curious how MONC is thinking about that role in these types of issues where we know it can quickly escalate and become extremely violent.
Thank you for that question. I think what I'd say in many ways is to agree. I think we are taking this as an opportunity to look really closely about what's documented and what's not. And as an area of improvement, we would have hoped that we received a call sooner. And once we heard about the incident, we were able to proactively reach out. But, you know, we talked about how the work that police do is a judgment call. This is human work too. And so there are some judgment calls that relate to that. I'd say a couple of things in response, the first of which being the nature of the mediations that Safe Streets mediated earlier in the evening did not indicate that the event was going in this direction. And so there wasn't, while we saw some interpersonal dynamics, it was nothing that indicated a mass shooting was about to occur. And this was from people who, at the Brooklyn side, I think I mentioned at the last hearing, these are people who are of the community, they've lived in Brooklyn for a long time, they've attended this event in the past, and there wasn't a sense that that's where it was heading. That being said, we are taking very seriously the development of a protocol that makes sense and one that we're confident that our staff can follow. And like I mentioned earlier, we're already seeing an increase in communication. But I think it's also important to make sure we're all working from the same baseline of understanding about what Safe Streets is and what it's not. These are not individuals who are law enforcement personnel. They're not an extension of or a replacement for police officers being onsite. These are unarmed civilians. They don't operate with firearms. They don't have an intelligence unit. They don't have Foxtrot. Their resource that they offer in many... Their resource that they offer in many cases and what they're able to leverage in communities to get people to put down a gun, to put away a firearm, and to even walk away from their plans to commit violence is their credibility. And that's credibility that they've been able to build through their lived experience, through their relationships, and that's primarily like what they're bringing to the table and what they're able to leverage. I can say in the conversations we've had with our staff since this incident's occurred, there is more communication happening now about, you know, hey, this event's happening in the community, it's not necessarily one that we're organizing, but we want to make sure it's on the radar of city government. And then that's information that MONC can make sure is on the CAO's radar, that our interagency partners that manage events can do something with, that if there is a serious safety concern, myself and my role can contact the deputy mayor for public safety and say, like, look, we got to come up with a plan for this and figure out what resources we need to bring to bear on an interagency level. And there is some, there is some infrastructure in place to facilitate that interagency coordination. But I would just say I appreciate that question, and I think we've all seen through this incident that there is room for improvement, and we're taking it extremely seriously to make sure that our sites know when they should be escalating things to us, even if they don't believe that there's going to be a serious public safety concern.
Yeah, no, and I think you hit the nail on the head in saying that it needs to be interagency and that it needs the same level of focus and dedication, just in the way that you all went out after the incident and responded, prevention is all the more critical with something like this. I am curious why folks didn't feel it was headed in this direction. Multiple, as you said, mediations, multiple conflicts, crowd is getting bigger and bigger. We know that unfortunately, in our city, many people have access to illegal guns. So why wasn't it felt that this was going to head in a potentially catastrophic direction?
From the information that I have earlier in the evening, while there was a big group there, the temperature of the event was not one in which, you know, fights were erupting, where it seemed like people were, we didn't see instances of people like pointing guns at one another. I think even some of the information that BPD shared as far as the calls that were received earlier in the evening about the gathering indicate that. And so it does appear that the temperature of the event turned into a different place later in the early hours of the next morning. But based on our conversations with Safe Street staff, I mean, they were doing the job that they do every day, they're consistently engaging with individuals who are either suspected to have a weapon on them or may be seen to have a weapon on them. So that part of their role is not unusual. But it appears that earlier in the evening, the sense was like, yeah, this is a big gathering, a lot of people are coming in, some of the staff mentioned that they saw quite a few people who appeared to be coming into the community from outside the community, which was a bit unusual. But at that time, there wasn't the sense that there was an imminent public safety concern, and the mediations that were logged indicated that the whatever situations they saw that led to them to come in and to de-escalate and do whatever were resolved and considered resolved, you know, when they walked away.
I will just say, and just to close this thread, to me, that feels like an area for improvement just around sort of being preventative. I will, in my own experience dealing with the sort of escalating party dynamics in Fell's Point, it can turn quickly, and often, we don't know who has guns, who does not have guns. You know, folks are, when there is the amount of alcohol and just interpersonal conflict and rage that we've seen in many scenes, again, not just in Baltimore, but these things can go from skirmishes to very significant shootings very, very quickly. That is unfortunately, the extremely dangerous nature of the country that we live in is because so many folks have guns, it doesn't just stop with a fistfight, it becomes a mass shooting. So I would just say from my perspective, and as we think about Safe Streets and MONC and just the need for preventive proactive measures, that figuring out a way to escalate these calls up the chain more quickly and to even knowing, again, I know we missed that this party was coming and that there were warning signs that PD's intelligence didn't pick up on and all of that, but that it just feels like there is a need for a really coordinated, thoughtful interagency approach that I think your office should really be a part of leading.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director.
Thank you, Councilman. I want to, I want to just kind of paint that finer point. As you guys were talking, I appreciated the question you asked and the response. Just looking at the timeline, and I know our Safe Streets workers on the ground, they don't have the intelligence that our police department or our 911 call center has. But the call that came in about hundreds of folks with guns and knives came in at about 9:41. And I understand the Safe Streets folks left at 11:30. So there may have, could have been a period in which they could have known or seen or suspected something. And I think to, you know, whether or not they did know this information or had any inkling of it, I think doesn't matter as much as should they have in the future. We have to beg that question, how we make sure that 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 information gets to the proper channel so that we can respond appropriately. And of course, we're not saying that our Safe Streets workers call BPD, that would sort of break the sort of code of ethics of sorts for Safe Streets. But we do want to make sure we have that proper mechanism in that short amount of time, if at all possible, so.
Thank you for that. We completely agree, and I would say, under the proposed policy that is written, we gave some consideration to what would have looked different had this policy been in place before. Just for some background, right now, in the CPI standard operations manual, we do have delineated policy and protocol around what Safe Streets should do if they are planning an event. So if they're a part of planning an event with the community, that's something they have to share with us, that's something that we make sure has been permitted, it goes through all the proper channels. They also should be coordinating with MONC when a shooting's taken place in their catchment zone, because then that launches into the process of a shooting response. Under the new proposed criteria, which, like I mentioned earlier, should really be activated in October, staff would have notified MONC about Brooklyn Day once they arrived on-site and saw this large of a group. They saw potentially, or even suspected that individuals had firearms, whether or not they saw them. And so we believe that, you know, the updated protocol would afford us the opportunity to be even more proactive.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Director. Councilwoman Ramos.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for HABC. So you mentioned earlier that there is management on-site, but they leave at 4:45 on a Friday. BPD reported that they saw on social media that there was going to be Brooklyn Day a few days before. So I'm wondering, did management of Brooklyn Homes that day know that Brooklyn Day was going to occur? And if not, why not? And if so, how come they didn't say anything?
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. We did speak with our management team. They did not indicate that they had any knowledge of what was happening or being planned for Brooklyn Day. Should they have had more communications with residents and maybe gotten that unofficial intel? That's to be considered. But, and we have made the indication to them that that's our expectation. But at that time, they did not know that, or they told us that they did not know it was occurring.
And has that person or management team been around for a while, or are they new?
They have been at the site, I want to say, for the last five years at least.
So they didn't think to, like, ask?
Ask if some.
If someone knew about Brooklyn Day, because it happens every year?
So we have various levels of communications. There are, we have different levels of communications with the residents. I cannot say that that is at the top of his mind to ask for, well, are you guys planning a Brooklyn Day here this weekend, this Fourth of July weekend? The intent, like President Abraham has said previously, is that we get that information from our leaders, our tenant leaders. They should be having conversations with us, hey, I want, and they do. We have some very good tenant council leaders, and they do come to us. And they do ask us to say, hey, do you know about this? Are you aware of this? And since we've been promoting that, don't forget, you have to ask permission to have events, to plan events. Go into your management office and make sure they start that process. So like President Abraham said, that communication is getting stronger, it just wasn't in place because of the nature of the tenant council at Brooklyn during that time.
Right, so you had reported earlier that the council wasn't around and that the leader had actually had passed, unfortunately, and so that there wasn't any leadership. I guess I'm having a hard time, because this is an annual event. It always happens. And for the police, HABC, others to not be proactive, to say, wait a second, Brooklyn Day happens in the summer, let's try to figure out when it's going to be, particularly given the situation that happened in 2022, where BPD had to come up with, you know, afterwards, came up with a whole protocol about how to handle Brooklyn Day, and yet that wasn't transferred over. That's not your problem, that's theirs. But I'm just having a really hard time trying to understand why there wasn't that kind of communication. And then my second question has to do with the tenant councils. Do you know if the, when they meet, does the neighborhood coordinating officer, the NCO from Southern District, come and participate in those meetings?
So for this tenant council, I can't say for sure that they do. But I do, I have had other developments where the NCO is very much connected to our tenant council, and those are the more established ones. So Douglas, Cherry Hill, there is a communication official or unofficial to say, hey, are you going to come to my meeting? And I have participated in some of those meetings, and I've met, and even at La Trobe. So I can't say for sure that it's happening with the NCO and the current tenant council president, but we'll make sure that that is something that's considered and connected when we, when she starts to have her meetings.
Commissioner or someone from BPD, do you know if that interaction has occurred in the past? I'm worried that if NCOs are not engaging in our HABC properties, that's not acceptable.
No, they actually should be. And we used to have, when we had those meetings, and I can't remember the gentleman's name, he would run them for all of the resident advisory council, would have a meeting for everyone. And it was all the councils, and we'd actually have our command staff there. But our NCOs, unless Colonel Jones can tell, I'm not sure if they're in there, but they should be.
Specifically for the Tenant Association, I'm not sure if that NCO supervisor or officers are present there. I do know that prior to the Brooklyn Day incident, they were at the Greater Braybrook Community Event. So it is something that they, if they are aware of, that the NCOs or the supervisor should be there. And if not, there should be something where the district commanders, when available, should go. But also, going forward, this is something that the Tenant Association of any of the HABC's properties, when available, are more than welcome and should attend the monthly commanders' meetings, where it is not only just that community, it is all communities within that district, where they can also have an open forum and voice and reference to any pending issues or concerns going forward.
Yeah, I understand that, but, you know, the monthly commanders' meetings is in a specific place, and if people can't get there, and it's such a big district, then.
No, that's not true. So the monthly commander's meetings are hybrid.
Some of them.
So they can either be in the district, or they can be the virtual meeting.
Right, thank you. So I just want to make sure that, you know, the NCOs, I think the NCOs in Southern District failed to try to have a relationship with residents in Brooklyn Homes, because this would, I mean, they would have understood what was going on if that was the case. And the commissioner and I have spoken about how to address that in the future, and I look forward to those changes. Regarding the security, they, the security officer or security supervisor had left and was not there, there wasn't anybody there. Normally, in that situation, you'd have an acting or some way to get that capacity in because it is so important. So could you talk about whether or not you did that? And why it wasn't done? If you, because it was, what I've been hearing is that, well, that position wasn't filled, there was nobody there, and it seems like that's major oversight.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So I think the context that needs to be stated is that that position did not exist in 2021. Prior to then, there was a housing authority police force, which was disbanded for whatever reason, and I'm not sure which year. So that gap in a security force, per se, or a security organizer, did not exist until late 2021. Once it did, we found it was a very valuable resource, and we worked very quickly to stand up interviews. There was, that was one person. There's no one in the agency with that kind of capacity, because it was a new position. We recognized we needed to have it. So to your question about whether someone could be acting, no. They didn't have the credentials to act in that capacity. The interviews for that position actually occurred June 27 through June 29. And we finalized those interviews, and we are now working through the process. At the one time, we were going to fill the one position. As a result of some discussions, and especially because of Brooklyn Day, we realized we do need two positions, so that if one is not there, we can have an acting capacity. That all occurred before Brooklyn Day. So hindsight, I mean, we were being proactive. And those positions are currently working through the HR system now to be hired. So we hope to have both on board very shortly, but there was not a capacity to have an acting person.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have anyone from the mayor's office of government relations, the mayor's office of neighborhoods, or the CAO's office here?
Councilman, I believe the CAO had to leave for their cabinet meeting. I'm not sure where the other folks are. They were here earlier, but they left.
But there's no one from neighborhoods or government relations here? Pardon? He's outside. Okay. The number of issues with special events process at DOT, I recognize this event was not, did not go through the special events permitting process. And we've made a number of changes to the special events process over the last several years, which oftentimes are not communicated to council members, and they're not communicated to historical applicants. Dominic, I was sharing about the special events permitting process in the city, which DOT manages, but Wreckin' Parks is involved, BPD is heavily involved. And there are, there have been many changes to the process each and every year for at least the last four years. And those changes aren't communicated to the city council, and they're not communicated to historical applicants. Historical applicants is a term that DOT uses and other agencies. I think everyone here has heard that term, for a group that might host a block party on the 1,300 block of whatever street. And so those things haven't been communicated. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity here for the administration to coordinate aggregating a list of all of those events that occur, considering all of the many efforts that have occurred over the last several years to re-envision and restrategize and recalibrate and all the other buzzwords that we use in city government, that special events process, to put together a list so that BPD is aware of it and flag the items on that list that are within the geographical footprint of HABC managed properties, so that we better understand the events. of HABC managed properties, so that we better understand the events that are going to happen every year. Brooklyn Day happens every year, the marathon happens every year, so on and so forth. Is that something that would be appropriate for the mayor's office to coordinate?
Thank you, Councilman Costello. I will definitely take that information back and provide you an answer on that. But I'll definitely relay that information and provide you an answer on that as soon as possible.
Thank you. I understand that that information is all readily available. It's just a matter of someone taking the, the paper packets that exist and entering that into a spreadsheet.
Right. Do, do you want to put that on a timeline, just so we make sure?
Yes, I would like a written response by call of business Friday, September 29th. Does that work, Mr. Chairman?
Does that work for you, Dominic?
I'll, like I said, I'll relay that information and try to get your answer as soon as possible. But you said Friday, we'll try to get that done.
Thank you, thank you. And, and that's really just a written response as to, we have this information, and we are committed to aggregating this information and effectively sharing it with our partners, because that information doesn't seem to make its way to our partner agencies until I start to complain about it for various special events.
Okay.
Thank you, Dominic. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Costello brought up a very, I think, important part here. A, a big part of the reason why we are here today and have been here now for three hearings is because we want to make sure that we do what is in our power to make sure this does not happen again. In our first hearing, we had the Department of Transportation, and later learned in the midst of that hearing that the Department of Transportation did not technically have a role here. But this is an exercise in us making sure that these things don't happen, whether they're on HABC properties, or in parks, or otherwise. I think I would really, really like to see, and I guess this is a, maybe a note to, to Dominic, I, I'd like to get a sense for what the department is doing to make it as easy as possible for folks to get their permits. I would, I would also love to know, what are some of the pain points of the special events permitting process? Noting that, you know, a number of times, folks put in a request for a permit and don't hear back until a week or two before that they were denied, leading to inevitably an unpermitted event. So I think we want to think about these pieces, cost of events and so on and so forth. So I, I would love to dig a little more into that issue. I know they are not responsible for any part of what happened on this day, but you know, if we really do want to learn from this, we want to make sure we pull them in. I see Liam in the back as partners in making sure that we, we don't make this mistake in other capacities in the future. I, I also want to make one other note broadly, and I've seen this following the Brooklyn Day shooting, and I'm, I'm not surprised by this, but I, I do want to acknowledge it publicly. Just a, a little bit more sensitivity, actually a lot of sensitivity around large programs, excuse me, large events across the city, such that we have been denying permits, or, you know, not replying until the last minute. You know, I, I think it's very, very important that, you know, the seriousness of this committee is so that we can feel comfortable doing these events in the future. I would love to have thousand people events every weekend if we could. That shows a healthy city, it shows a vibrant city. We don't want to end up in a situation where we are too afraid to host events and we're squashing opportunities to promote our city and have people have great times in our city. So this is not an exercise in being real strict about events. This is an exercise in making sure that our events are safe. And that when we have suspicions that they might not be safe, we act expeditiously. So I just want to put that on the table. If there's any comment about that, feel free. I'm not necessarily asking, I just want to make sure that folks understand what we're doing here. All right, I'm going to hand over, Councilman Porter, you have any questions?
Thank you, I have two questions related to the special permitting process. Who is the designated responsible agency that coordinates these types of large events? Would it be DOT?
Largely DOT, sometimes Wreckin' Parks.
Yeah.
There are a number of agencies.
Okay, okay. And so one of the things that I'm really concerned about is the lack of, the lack of just, how can I put it? The lack of accountability from designated responsible agencies. DOT is the coordinating agency, and I think that when you're asking for a particular protocol and/or coordination, inter-agency coordination, because the special permitting office comes out of that agency, they should be the person to coordinate that, that particular process. Liam, is that something that the director can commit to? Given that they're, you know, we all agree that they are the responsible agency here?
Thank you, Councilwoman, it's a great question. I know that these are conversations that we're having, and they're very important conversations that we're having. I think we're still trying to figure out, from an operations perspective internally, what makes the most sense. And I think everyone here is, is aware of the press release we issued last week. We've rolled out a number of initiatives to help streamline the public-facing aspect of our special events permitting process. So it's an ongoing conversation we're going to have to have with agencies such as HABC. I will, I can assure everyone here now that there is a tremendous amount of coordination that happens between partner agencies for a wide range of special events, and they're going to vary, vary in terms of size. But I can assure you that it's a conversation that's active. I don't want to speak in absolutes just yet, because these are conversations that are still being had. But we're laser focused on this, looking for opportunities to improve. I think internally, there's still some things, though, that need to be sorted out.
Okay. Do you know when we'll have some sort of response from the agency?
We can, we can work to get, get you that timeline.
Okay. Can we have that by call of business on, I'll give you till next Friday?
Yeah.
Okay. When the director returns?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question actually has to do with HABC as far as relocation. How are you all prioritizing relocation, relocation assistance for families that were directly impacted by this mass shooting?
I can start the response. We have a list of residents that wanted to be transferred. We have, we are working with the state attorney's office, and also with the police department to get the threat assessment done. Our process requires that residents who put in for an emergency transfer relative to victims or witness, that we get a threat assessment from the police department. So we're working through that process currently to ensure that we have the proper paperwork in place before we start any transfer process. We, we did transfer one family member already, because we were able to close the loop on all the requirements. Everyone else, we're working with them. Some residents, I just want to be frank and, and not have you call my office and ask what happened. Some residents will be denied. And they will be denied based on the fact that they do not meet the criteria spelled out in our transfer policy.
And what's the, what's the average turnaround time for that threat assessment to be completed by BPD to come back to HABC?
I don't have an average time, but normally, you know, as soon as they come out and assess and then send us a written report, that normally doesn't take any more than a couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Burnett? Cohen? Ramos?
For HABC, there was a shooting in January at Brooklyn Homes. The constituent, the mother was my, is my constituent. And so I was surprised to hear that you just had the security at four of the sites, and not also Brooklyn Homes that has a history of, of violence. Can you speak a little bit to what the measures were that you put in place? I, I realize that you had the security person and all of that, but the, the fact that these, the other security folks were just at these four and not at Brooklyn, you know, my constituent is very distraught that it seems like nothing, there were no lessons learned and nothing was done, and her son is dead, and now we have two other people dead. So I'm curious to know a little bit more, you know, why wasn't there security at Brooklyn, but you had him at four of the other sites?
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I am, I was here for the hearing when your constituent did share that heartbreaking story. So I certainly do feel for her pain and her loss. When we established that security operations manager position, it was because we wanted to rely on the, the expertise, the intelligence, the interaction that that person brought to the table with the, the local law enforcement entities. The pilot program that you're speaking about, those four sites were prioritized based upon information that was, he gathered from his counterparts in, in BPD and other areas, sheriff's office, and what we were able to identify at that time for a pilot. A pilot meant that we had limited funds to be able to dedicate to it, and so what sites did you prioritize? So we relied on his, his guidance in that effort. And the pilot actually was supposed to end this year, December 2023. Prior to his departure in May, he went ahead and recommended that we expand that pilot. It could have very well been because of the incident that happened in January. So we expanded it before the end of the pilot. So that's what I can offer you. We've relied on that information and that expertise, and, and we will continue to do so for those that fill those positions. And now that it's, it doesn't help the January incident, but now that it's at each site, we will again rely on their expertise to help us navigate where do we need more and where can we, can we right-size it? And maybe we need to change hours, change locations, add people, add resources. But again, that's not internal information and, and expertise that HABC has, and that's why we hired to get that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Costello. No further questions. So we're going to move into public testimony. If you wish to testify and are here in person, please feel free to step forward to the podium. We'll give you two minutes. And if you are joining us virtually, please use the raise hand function, and we'll acknowledge you and give you two minutes to testify. All right, seeing no further testimony, I want to thank all the agencies here that did all this work to get us to where we are today. Clearly, this is a tragic incident that it is integral that we learn from. I want to thank especially our police commissioner for the transparency and honesty with which he's approached this process. I think it's going to be really, really important for us to learn from it. Likewise, for the other leaders here who have been really, really important in helping us understand what went wrong here. And the folks who are not in this room, who are also going to be learning from what, what happened here today, I think we'll have follow-ups with the Department of Transportation. There are going to be implications for the Department of Wreckin' Parks and otherwise, folks who are hosting events in various parts of the city. You know, I, I think we did really important work here, but there, there's always more to do, and I want to make sure that we, we don't forget how important these small decisions and small opportunities are to learn from mistakes like this, are toward our forward progress. So with that, this hearing is in recess, and we will reconvene at 1:00 PM. Thank you. Good afternoon, and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have myself, Mark Conway, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, Councilman Burnett, representing the 8th District, Councilwoman Porter, representing the 10th District, and Councilwoman Ramos, representing the 14th District, representing the Office of the President. We've got Preston Lewis in the back. And representing the mayor's office, we've got Dominic. Thank you, Dominic. This committee meeting is to hear Council Resolution 23-0182R, informational hearing, Regional Water Governance Task Force, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Office of the City Administrator, the Director of Public Works, the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, the Office of Equity and Civil Rights, and other relevant agencies to report on the topics outlined in this resolution and provide additional as, additional information as needed by the committee. This bill is sponsored by Councilmember Ramos, and I will hand it off to Councilmember Ramos to open this up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, colleagues, for spending more time with us this afternoon. I introduced this hearing in July to, because we had, in the General Assembly had just passed legislation that outlined that there would be a Regional Water Governance Task Force to look at, you know, all things water, all things wastewater, and understanding our relationship with Baltimore City and Baltimore County, and potentially creating a regional water authority. And there's a series of questions in the resolution that I think we'll get answered today, including, there was a report done in 2021 that had some recommendations that I'd like to go over today, or have somebody go over today, as well as understanding what the task force is doing now. And since it's had its first meeting and there's other meetings coming up, what ways there will be public input, and also looking at, you know, the role of the, of the city council. I will say that I, I think that having this exercise is extremely important, to have this regional water task force, because the relationship between Baltimore County and Baltimore City in particular, relative to our water, we hear about every day. How come the county pays less? County residents pay less than city residents, and yet it's the same water. What, you know, how does it all work out? And so looking at all of those relationships is extremely important. And making sure that we have a system that's equitable, where everybody's paying their fair share, and that we're getting the revenue needed to be able to maintain our infrastructure, both in the city and in the county, which the city services is extremely important. So I'm, I'm glad that we're here. I know that there are a series of meetings that are happening, but I wanted to have a discussion specifically with our committee, Mr. Chair, because we were kind of left out of this whole thing. And yet, we hear all the time from our constituents, we experience it every day. We were just talking about flooding. And so I wanted to figure out the best way that the council can be involved and have oversight, as well as be informed moving forward. So, and to have a more transparent process, as well as make sure that there's public input. So I'm grateful that the Department of Public Works is here, also the comptroller is here. He wasn't initially on the list for the resolution, but I'm very glad that his office reached out to us. He happens to be the chair of the task force, so we'll hear from him also. And we have a series of questions. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for calling this hearing. I think it was very timely also, given the fact that the report's going to come out in January. So we, I wanted to insert ourselves in this process early on, so thank you.
Appreciate you, thank you, Councilwoman, thank you for bringing it to the committee. I understand DPW has a presentation, and Mr. Comptroller, do you have a presentation as well?
I, I don't have a presentation, I'm just here to maybe say a few words, but mostly answer questions after the, the DPW presentation's been made.
So what we'll do is we'll get reports from other agencies before we go to DPW. We'll start first with the City Solicitor's Office. I understand we've got Hillary Ruley joining us virtually. Hillary, do you have the report? We'll come back to the Solicitor's Office. Next, we'll go to the City Administrator's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dominic MacLulley, on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, the City Administrator's Office has no objection to the bill.
Thank you, Dominic. Next, the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. Oh, Hillary? We can hear you. Or we could hear you, can't hear anymore. We, we've got text confirmation that the Law Department stands by its report and approves for legal sufficiency. Of course, Government Relations, we touched on. The Office of Equity and Civil Rights. Tyler? Tyler just stepped out. We will come back to the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. Without further ado, Director, you're welcome to do your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councilmembers, members of the public, Comptroller Henry as well for being here, Chair of the Task Force. I believe at this time I can go straight into the presentation?
Yes.
Perfect. I'm Richard Luna. I'm the interim director for the Department of Public Works. I also have Marsha Collins as well with me, representing the agency to assist in any questions. The presentation we put together here is a very high-level overview of the task force, its history, and next steps for their work. And so just a quick outline of how we'll run through the presentation. I'll do a quick overview of the history of how we got here today, the scope of work required by the legislation, the scope of work for the consultants that are tasked with supporting the work of the task force, their composition membership, and then the timeline for the final recommendation. Just to catch everyone up to speed, so there are existing agreements and longstanding priorities between both Baltimore City and the county, and how the water system is governed. Those tied back to acts dating back to 1945, '72, and '74. Those agreements are still in place in terms of how the system is managed between the two jurisdictions. According to the agreements, the city provides both the city and county the following services, which is raw water supply and treatment, water system operation and maintenance, and water, wastewater treatment. The, in theory, the water facility planning effort between the city and county is a joint collaboration, and it's funded through a staff that support the water analyzers' office, and then other services are more the individual responsibility of each utility, such as development approval and setting of the rates. Back in 2021, or actually before then, both the city and the county came together to do a study of the overall governance structure and the operations of the water utility. They engaged with a company called Nugent, so sometimes we reference this as the Nugent Study, as you see on the screen, but it looked at functional areas about the existing agreements I just mentioned, the organizational structure, the current governance models, staffing levels, system planning, management, the meter-to-cash operations and field operations, and then it put together some key findings and observations in three main broad categories, which was operational, organizational, and governance. The governance part of the key findings is what the primary focus of the presentation will revolve around, because that directly ties into the work of the task force. Regarding those Nugent recommendations in terms of the governance structure, so there's four main items that we pulled from the report that talk about next steps after that report was completed in '21. The first one is that the city and the county should work together on a scope of work to issue an emergency RFP to do a further evaluation of the governance structure. So that work was completed back in April of May of this year. Next recommendation, for the city to issue an RFP and work in coordination with the county to select a vendor. That was completed earlier in this year, back on May 30th. And then for the next item, to select a vendor, issue a notice to proceed, to convene a stakeholder advisory group to explore recommendations for a stronger governance. So that essentially is separated by a couple of items. First, the legislation itself that formed the task force, that was approved back on April 24th, or signed by the governor on that date. The task force was later named on July 20th, and then the notice to proceed was issued on July 26th. The final recommendation from that 2021 report is for the city and the county to issue a joint report on next steps. That essentially is the responsibility now of the task force, based off of the legislation. They have a deadline to complete their work by January 30th of '24. In terms of the 2023 General Assembly legislative process, so the city and the county both began working on a proposed legislation, this dates back to over a year ago, back in the summer of '22. That group consisted of the Baltimore City Administrator at that time, the city's deputy administrator, and the former Public Works Director. From the county side, it consists of the county administrator and then the Public Works Transportation Director. It was later expanded to include both the city and the county government relations staff in the fall of last year, as that group worked collaboratively on a proposed legislation that they would share then with the delegates. HB 843 was first read in February of '23, and it was cross-filled with SB 880. As you see by the sponsors there, it's a number of different delegates and senators in the region that were in favor of the legislation, and like I mentioned earlier, the legislation itself was approved by the governor on April 24th of this year. Now we'll move next to the task force scope of work as required by the legislation. This is a very high-level overview of what the task force is tasked to perform, the work that they're tasked to perform as part of the legislation. The task force is to review the findings under Task Two, and in this reference, it's back to the 2021 Nugent Study. Likewise, to review the findings under Task 2.4 and explore other existing governance models, to assess alternative governance structures, so to look at other case examples that they see fit, and then to analyze the fiscal implications and the efficiencies of each alternative. After they complete that work, they're supposed to recommend the governance model best suited for Baltimore's water system. As they're coming up with that recommendation, the task force is required to consult with both the Maryland Department of Environment and Environmental Services, MDE and MES, in developing that recommendation, and then finally to report their findings and recommend the most appropriate governance model to three individuals, the mayor, the county executive, and then the governor, and that's, that work is supposed to be completed by January 30th of '24, so just here in a few months. So I mentioned earlier that the city and the county had worked together in terms of helping find a consultant that can then support the task force. So given the strict timeline that the task force was going to have to work under in order to get their recommendation together by January 30th, that both the city and the county had worked together in terms of helping find a consultant that can then support this work. So WSP is the consultant that's working with the task force right now, and they've been doing all of the administrative and research, analysis, support, working behind the scenes to help the task force accomplish its work. Here, in the tasks that you'll see over the next few slides, there are six main tasks for WSP in supporting the task force, and the text that you're going to see here on the screen is almost identical or verbatim as pulled from the legislation that was filed in House Bill 843. So the first item is to review the Nugent Study under Task One, to review that report and help the task force in finding and making the recommendations before their legislative deadline. That's the first task. Task Two dives deeper into the, exploring Task Two under the original report, and then also looking at the city and county organizational structures and governance models as it relates to the organizational structure, both for the city and the county, the coordinated city-county governance models, and then the governance model examples and case reviews that were already included in that existing report. Task Three for WSP, the consultant supporting the task force work, is to look at Task 2.4, which was specifically called for in the legislation, and then as well to explore other existing regional water and wastewater governance models, to then assess the pros and cons in different approaches, and how it'd impact those following items. And then the subbullets that you see there on the screen, those items as well are pulled directly from the legislation. Moving to Task Four, assess alternative governance structures for Baltimore's region water and wastewater utility, and then develop a range of governance structure options for consideration, likewise in developing those alternative structures, to look at those items directly related to the governance, finance, capital planning, et cetera. Those items that you see there as well, too, on the screen, were pulled directly from the legislation, and then incorporated into the scope of work for the consultants. Two more tasks to get through here. Task Five is to analyze the fiscal implications and efficiencies for each alternative, to look at those estimated short and long-term costs, the 10-year historical costs, and to also look at the wholesale stakeholders and regional partners as part of the system, look at any kind of cost savings associated with the system transitions, asset leases, capital planning, et cetera. Those items that you see there on the screen as well. And then finally, Task Six is all-encompassing. It's really to help and support the task force to get to their recommended governance model, to propose any necessary legislation so that they can meet their mandates under the House Bill 843 and that legislation. Wrapping up here, this is just an overview of the task force composition. So it's a 13-member task force, different appointing authorities, five members appointed by our Baltimore City Mayor, three members appointed by the Baltimore County Executive. I won't read each of the individual names here, but essentially a mix of both water experts, people with past experience in this work, both inside the Bureau, the agency, and outside, as well as labor representation. And this finalizes the list of the task force members, two members appointed by the governor, one member appointed through the state senate, one member appointed through the House of Delegates, and then one member that was named by the Chair of the Baltimore Metropolitan Council. This next slide will just show you a very broad, high-level overview of the work that's ahead of them. This is a page that we took from the consultant's proposal, but essentially overlapping priorities as it gets through the tasks that I laid out to you, and helping the task force reach its ultimate goal of getting the recommendation completed and submitted by their January 30th deadline. And then finally, we just have the public meeting scheduled for the task force that I'll leave on the screen for you. Like Councilmember Ramos had mentioned, the first meeting of the task force took place on September 13th, for the council and for the public. The next meeting of the task force is going to be next week on Wednesday. That's the bottom left-hand side of your screen. It'll be over at the Middle Branch Wellness Center, starting at 6:00. And then we have meetings as well scheduled for them in October, mid-October, the beginning of November. And then finally, the task force is planning to do two virtual-only meetings. One will take place in mid-November, and then the final meeting will take place in January prior to their deadline of getting a proposal back to the mayor, the county executive, and the governor. And so with that, that concludes the presentation as far as the high-level overview, and we are happy to take questions from staff after the Comptroller and Chair of the Task Force makes his remarks.
Thank you, Director. We're going to go back, before I get to the Comptroller, to the Office of Equity and Civil Rights for their report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tyler Chanel from the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. I don't know why our bill report isn't on the file. I'll correct that with Natwana. I don't know what happened there, but I'll just read our conclusion and the further considerations, and then, once you get the report, we stand by it. And so any changes to Baltimore City's control of its water and wastewater utility system will have profound impacts on Black, Latin, and other residents of color. Therefore, it is crucial that the Water Governance Task Force explore any potential desperate impacts that may arise during any governance model changes under consideration prior to making any formal recommendations on changes to the governance model. And then for further consideration, we added that Detroit, a city of comparable racial composition and population size, experienced, they went through a forced regionalization process of their water and sewage utility system, and is a move that is well documented for its detrimental impacts on Black, Latin immigrant, and other marginalized communities. The Water Governance Task Force should consider the experience of Detroit, particularly the lessons drawn from the establishment of the Great Lakes Water Authority as a case study to safeguard against the possibility of similar injustices occurring in Baltimore City. So that's just a broad overview of what we concluded, and then that piece that we added for further consideration, which is the case study of what happened in Detroit. I think the other thing that we would say is, it's important that through the governance model changes and whatever happens with our water utility system, that some of these vital water affordability programs remain in place, specifically Water for All, which is a program that provides discounts to our residents that need it most, and to ensure that they don't have to worry about being insecure financially if they can't afford a water bill. The city steps in and provides that discount, which is contingent upon their income levels. And I believe that eligibility for that program is those who are, fall under 200% of the federal poverty level guideline can receive, are eligible to participate in that program. And there are other programs that greatly benefit our residents, and we just want to ensure that through this process, those programs remain in place, and that the city does not lose its authority to ensure affordability for city residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Mr. Comptroller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, like I said, my remarks will be brief. I appreciate already what I've heard today, and especially just now, the report from the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. I would encourage, I would encourage that office, I would encourage individual council people, I would encourage the council as a whole, and I would encourage anyone listening to this hearing that if you have specific issues or items that you want the task force to consider, and it is not convenient to attend one of the remaining public hearings and say so during the public comment period, please email that information to us. There's contact information on the city and the county's websites, and we will ensure that any such information is distributed to task force members, for task force members to take in. But speaking very specifically to the equity issue raised by the existing city programs, as I have already said at public meeting, at the first public meeting, I cannot tell people now what the recommendation will be. That is for the task force to determine after the remaining information comes to us over the next few months, but I am happy to guarantee, as the chair, that these items and these issues will be discussed. I will say that I personally, as an individual member of the task force, hope that one aspect of our recommendation will be to, with whatever we come up with, I hope that we will recommend that the existing city-based programs that DPW already provides to help those customers who are at the more challenged end of the income spectrum, I hope that we will recommend that those programs be continued system-wide for whatever governance structure we end up recommending. And that really is the conclusion of my brief remarks, but I'm happy to stick around for questions that might be more applicable to the task force themselves than to the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller. We're going to jump into questions from the committee, and I'll start with sponsor, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, Mr. Leva, thank goodness, gave us in our packets here the 2021 study that has, was produced where we went over sort of the recommendations, but on Roman numeral three to Roman numeral eight, and I think a couple of other pages after that is the executive summary, that has the findings of this consultant who was hired by the city and the county to do a baseline, I guess, right? It's a baseline evaluation of the systems. And like I said, we hear a lot about what residents think the issues are, but this also looks like there's, you know, a lot of other challenges, and I wonder, Director Luna or Comptroller, if you can go over some of these just so that people have them. I, Mr. Leva, if you could put this on the bill file so that the public has it, that would be, okay, great. Because the findings, you know, have everything to do with the fact that we don't have a drought plan, that we, there's, you know, water protection standards, that there's no formal communications procedures between no formal communications procedures between the county and the city, that, you know, they're not using metrics to talk about performance, that there's capacity issues. So I wonder, Director, if you can go over some of these. Obviously, there's five pages of these findings, but some of the big highlights that you and the task force, and maybe Mr. Chair of the task force, Mr. Comptroller, could talk a little bit about what those highlights of the findings are, so that gives us a base for, really, the justification, I guess, of even going through this exercise.
I'll take the question first, in terms of speaking on behalf of the department and the agency, and then as well incorporate how we currently work and engage with the county, because I think that would actually be most helpful as well, too, to the council and the public. So shortly after the 2021 report was issued, the city and the county began meeting collaboratively to go over many of these items that you see on the recommendations. There's a monthly meeting that's held. I attend those meetings on behalf of the agency, as long as my leadership team. The county brings their leadership team as well. And then there's a number of subcommittees that meet and kind of essentially dive deeper into some of those issues that were laid out in the report. Overall, what I can say is that through those series of meetings, we've made tremendous progress in terms of communication resolving outstanding and long-term issues between the city and the county. One of the main things to highlight here is that there was a backlog of about almost 6,000 work orders in Baltimore County that had not been addressed, right before those meetings had started. And it took staff a few months, but within a year after that, after those meetings began happening, all of those work orders were completed. And so, it's those type of issues that we work out together with our counterparts in the county, to understand how we can perform better, to provide service levels equal to both city and county residents. In terms of, one of the items you had mentioned, I think it's on the first page, is drought response planning. Our staff is currently working on that type of report as well, too, and likewise will be working in collaboration, because drought response planning is a regional effort, it's not just within the city.
For sure.
Same thing as well with the source water protection and land use. That is a current project that's currently ongoing as well. In terms of performance management and continuous improvement, that relates back to all of our turnaround initiatives that we implemented within CSSD and our meter shop. So we met, this was the former director who started this work before I joined the city, but holding regular daily meetings with both our call center and our meter shop to go over outstanding issues, customer complaints, work orders, and putting those systems into place to modernize us and to provide ultimately better customer service at the end of the day. And so those meetings continue to today. Our staff continues to have those, and likewise as well, too. We share those results as well with our Baltimore County counterparts through those monthly meetings and then subcommittee meetings that we had talked about. I'm quickly scrolling through the list, because it is quite a few number of items that are on there. But I think mostly in terms of just on the operation side, the report itself did highlight a number of deficiencies internally, right? So a lack of quality assurance, measures on training for our staff, to getting them through the process to ultimately improving the ultimate customer service. And our staff has done an amazing work over the past two years, since this report was issued, to really look at those items, to take them seriously, and to put new measures in place that would move us in the right direction, especially on any of the deficiencies that were outlined in that 2021 report.
Yeah, we had a hearing in this committee, or in rules, I think, regarding the billing issues. And Ms. Curtis, who's now Chief of Staff, and Ms. Horn, have, I think, done an amazing job of reforming that entire department, in terms of the dispute resolution department. I think you'll hear from my colleagues that, who've been here longer than I, that they used to get more complaints about water billing issues, and that we still get them, but it's not as frequent. So that's good. So I guess, you know, this was a helpful baseline for you, but I guess I'm wondering, just based on this list, what then is the task force going to be looking at? Because if you're already doing some repairs of some of the things that were in the report, other than what I articulated earlier, which was, you know, that, just to solidify that relationship, you know, the '72 or '74 document, doesn't make a hecka lot of sense. So if there's a way, if that's also one of the things that you're looking at, because that's not actually in here.
Right. So I believe that topic essentially came up at the last meeting of the task force on the 13th, and that conversation will essentially continue to this upcoming meeting or subsequent meetings. There was a point raised by one of the task force members about, can we understand the operational challenges or issues that are currently in place, both in the city and the county, that can then help us make a better recommendation on the right governance model to move forward next? We'll have representatives from my department attending the committee meetings to help answer any of those questions. And then likewise, we've been engaging with the consultant to share updates on different SOPs that we have in place, new organizational structures, workflows, et cetera, so that they're fully informed about the improvements that we've made to date since that 2021 report was issued.
So then, the results could be just, you know, that the county and city are working better together, and there may not need to be a new structure?
That would be a more appropriate question for the task force, because that's ultimately the decision of the task force versus staff's recommendation.
Yes, I will say, well, I will repeat again something I said at the first public meeting. There are three things that are not on the table for the recommendation that we're charged with providing. One thing that is not on the table is any recommendation that involves Baltimore City not continuing to own the actual infrastructure of the water and wastewater system. That is not on the table. Privatization is not on the table. A recommendation that would involve turning over day-to-day operations to a for-profit third-party entity is not something that we will consider. And I don't know that this is as firmly in consonant all the task force members, but many of the ones that I spoke with before we convened are comfortable with the idea that the other thing that is not on the table is doing nothing. That the status quo is not something that we are looking forward to recommending that we continue. And if I will go, I can go a little step further when I say that the New Gen Report is like, what, 320, something like?
Right, we have the executive summary here, yeah.
There are a lot of written expectations in the New Gen Report. One of the unwritten things that we're all sort of dealing with, but maybe not saying explicitly enough and clearly enough and often enough, is the premise that a better governance system would lead to better operations. Okay, that's really kind of what this task force, as far as I'm concerned, is about, is that the New Gen Report was a very sharp, pointed, and extensive examination of things that aren't being done as well as they could or should be right now. The task force is not going to get into all of those things. This is, the task force is not going to try, in the comparatively ridiculously brief amount of time that we have, we're not going to try to redesign DPW to work better. We're not going to micromanage the daily operations of, or more importantly, we're not going to try to come up with in just the span of, really, you know, a couple months. We're not going to try to completely micromanage all of DPW's operations. What we're going to try to do is look at other models for governance systems for water and wastewater systems across the country, and see if there are other governance structures which will provide the broader amount of openness and transparency to make more of the stakeholders more comfortable, that there will be clearer opportunities to fix the individual operational challenges that exist. And I got used to saying something three years ago that kind of is similar to that. I spent a lot of time in 2019, 2020, saying, if more people knew how their money was being spent, we would have to spend it better. And I think that's kind of the same unwritten expectation here, is that if we had a more open and transparent governance structure for our water and wastewater systems, one that included a broader range of stakeholders in the decision-making process, or at the very least showed more of the details of the decision-making process, the light of day would itself require a more effective and efficient decision-making process to happen.
Gotcha. I have more questions, but I'll yield to my colleagues before.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Comptroller, for walking through those components. That helps a lot to help me understand the scope of what the commission is working on. A couple of things. Are we talking at all about how the governance structure has an impact on the billing process and how we manage any of that? Because I'll tell you, there is still a lot of confusion about the differences in billing between the city and the county.
Correct.
For which I try to explain, but frankly, when I start trying to explain, I get confused as well. So I'm curious if you guys are thinking about that in the course of your deliberations.
Well, I have, I'm trying to think of the best way to answer that. The most honest answer is, we're thinking about it, because I believe everyone on the task force is aware of that level of confusion that exists. Whether what we do would be, would involve a direct change to that is another matter. And I'm trying to think if there's another way, I could go back and just expand more on. One of the things that the task force is required to do is review the information in the New Gen Report. We are not required to opine on it. You know, we're not required to agree or disagree with the New Gen Report. The only recommendation the task force is required to make is on a governance structure. So, I mean, I guess, an example I could give is that the current governance structure for DPW, I'm sorry, the current governance structure for our water and wastewater system is, we have a number of agreements with other counties. And they govern how much, you know, how we provide water, what we charge them. I don't know if the agreements govern what they charge their, yeah, that's up to the individual localities, what they want to charge their constituents. So theoretically, if we sell a gallon of water to a county for a dollar, and they choose to charge their constituents 50 cents for it, that has, that's nothing we can control right now. Also, yeah.
That'd be similar to, I think, what we're trying, we would want to protect for the Water for All program and different affordability considerations we're talking about from the city perspective.
Right. And that's, like, right now, under the status quo, the Water for All program is only for Baltimore City residents.
Yes.
We can't require Baltimore County residents to be part of that, even though there are almost certainly plenty of people living in Baltimore County who would also benefit from it. But hypothetically, if they're, like, one of the kinds of models, or one of the governance structures that we're looking at is a regional water authority. And under a governance structure like that, there would be a separate not-for-profit entity that would be responsible for the operations of the system. And all of us inside that area, whether we live in Baltimore City, Baltimore County, whatever, if you want to be a customer of that system, you're a customer of that regional water authority. If we had a structure like that, we could just recommend, or if we were going to recommend a structure like that, we could also recommend that that regional water authority continue any existing equity-based programs that the city is already providing into a region-wide scope. And that would be a way to deal with some of the issues around equity in the broader sense. But it's also one of the reasons why the status quo is not necessarily something we would want to continue, because under the status quo, you would need each locality to come up with their own Water for All program in order to accomplish that same goal.
Got it. Thank you. And looking through, for my second question, looking through some of the recommendations in the executive summary, I noticed a lot of stuff about drought protection and source water protection. Got my mind running about stormwater, and whether or not that's a part of the scope of the commission.
As they say in the presidential debates, "Thank you for the question."
You're very welcome.
We recently had an in-depth conversation with staff from both the city and the county that was predicated by this issue coming up at the first public meeting. And the reality is that when this legislation was developed by the General Assembly that created the task force, stormwater was not in it. And as far as I can tell, it does not seem to have been not in it because anyone made a conscious decision to say, ooh, putting stormwater in would be too hard, let's not do it. Or there's some other reasons why we don't want to deal with stormwater on a regional basis. It seems to have just been not what we were focused on. And I don't think the New Gen Report, yeah, addresses stormwater, and very much so, this task force is, very much so, this task force is about, will you please just listen to the New Gen Report? And so that's, I mean, that's what we're doing. This is, we are all sitting down and actually paying attention to the New Gen Report in a very open and public way, as opposed to just the city and the county meeting on a regular basis, trying to hash out some of the issues. So stormwater, I personally think that it's an opportunity to also look at stormwater while we're looking at water and wastewater, for numerous reasons. One is, and I'm, I mean, I'm not even a DPW person, and I know from the complaints that I've gotten, from listening to DPW explain to the council over the years, I know how much stormwater is tied to wastewater, even if we don't want it to be all the time. I suspect that there are also staffing and budget considerations that would be difficult to separate if we came up with a recommendation. to separate if we came up with a recommendation that involved somehow changing how water and wastewater worked that didn't involve taking stormwater along. But probably more important than either of those in the, in the biggest picture fashion, stormwater really doesn't, stormwater does not care about lines on a map. And, and we probably, no, we definitely don't have the level of regional cooperation we really ought to have now, when it comes to how the overall area, how greater Baltimore deals with stormwater. And I think that, I mean, one of the reasons why I was very proud and honored to be on this task force in the first place is because I believe that regional cooperation is important in general, and this is an area where it is especially so. And stormwater is an area where it is especially so. And any opportunity to institutionalize cooperation between the jurisdictions on something in which they are so effectively inter- and co-dependent is not an opportunity that should be missed, in my opinion.
Mr. Comptroller, I could not agree with you more. And, you know, from a practical perspective, at the very least, at the bare minimum, noting that we want to protect our source waters, make sure that there are the proper filtration enforced in areas around so that we don't have runoff from, you know, roads and urban areas or any other pollution rolling into our drinking water. You know, there's a very practical sense for why we need to be thinking about stormwater. On top of the additional consideration, the amount of stormwater that comes into the city that ends up overflowing our stormwater systems, ends up then overflowing into our sewage systems and causing backups and otherwise, there are real implications there that we can't avoid. And I wonder, the opportunity, it'd be really sad if we missed, at the bare minimum, the opportunity to, you know, put that on the table and just chew on it for a bit. I appreciate that. Thank you.
We're going to have a vote of the task force at the next public meeting on whether the task force should ask to broaden its scope for the remainder of the process, so that the consultants will be providing us the information we would need to also include stormwater in any recommendation that we make. I, I look forward to the task force also treating this as an opportunity, but I can't promise that will be the case. But I can encourage anyone who feels similarly to come and provide public comment before the vote.
Okay. Can you share with us when those, is there an in-person opportunity, a virtual opportunity, or should we then write?
We had the schedule as part of the presentation.
Okay.
I think it's right, still up there. Yeah.
Duly noted.
But is there, just as a follow-up to Mr. Chair's question, is there a, an opportunity for the governing bodies of the, well, I'm sorry, I don't want to use governing bodies, the legislative bodies of the various jurisdictions to weigh in? Because I think this particular, there's a lot of issues, but I'm just going to use stormwater as an example. That's super huge. That's a big deal for me. I mean, we have flooding in our various districts that is, where the city's about to undertake some major infrastructure projects to address. And if it doesn't work, it's because we're getting stormwater from elsewhere that, you know, we need to, so I guess the question is, how can we, as the legislative body, effectuate some of the work that you all are doing in the task force? Is it, I meant to come to the first one, I couldn't, but I plan on going to all the rest. Is it, you know, showing up for type of public testimony? Can we do a formal letter? Would that even matter? Again, we were left out of this whole equation, so I just want to figure out how we can insert ourselves back in.
Please understand that it gives me no joy to make the following statement, having sat on your side for a number of years, but for all practical purposes, the, the task force's process treats all elected officials and legislative bodies as part of the public. So you are, that, that is why I started with the, encouraging all of you as individual council people, or if you want to, you know, pass a resolution as the council to, to bring that input to us. There is, the next, the next hearing is October 4th, so Wednesday evening. The meeting will be at the new Middle Branch Fitness and Wellness Center. I mean, is that, I, I still want to call it a rec center, even though I know it's so much more. But the cathedral to recreation that has been built down in the Middle Branch, that's where the next public hearing will be. I believe six o'clock to nine o'clock. The way we structured the agenda, the first part of the meeting is presentation and discussion by the task force, and then we open it up for public comment. And then we're going to be making a point going forward, when we have actual votes, to hold the votes off until a final section after public comment, so that we get a chance to hear public comment before we make any voting decisions. So I would encourage you to come and be part of the two minutes per person, two, two, two minutes per person.
Deference to the elected.
I'm sure that the chair would be a responsible and reasonable person when it comes to, comes to time. But I really am 100% serious when I say, I encourage you to come and, and convey on behalf of the tens of thousands of people each of you represent, who maybe don't have the same ability to just get up and come down to these hearings and, and talk about what is important to them.
Thank you. Councilman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I wanted to go back to one of the outline of the process the task force would take, the task force will be taking to create and assess various recommendations. I wanted to delve a little bit into the assessment of the impact on workers and jobs for city employees. One of the major issues that many, many unions in the room have brought up to us, many actual DPW workers that work in those facilities have brought up to us, is really about the occupational health of these facilities. How is that going to be translated into these recommendations? You have capital improvement, you have the impact on city workforce. I want to make sure that we are also prioritizing the occupational health and safety hazards that some of these employees are undergoing.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The glib answer is subtly, but the, the more, more accurate and nuanced answer is, that falls into the broader category of if your governance structure is one in which a broader group of people have a greater amount of awareness of the decisions that are being made, and an easier opportunity to provide substantive input into that decision-making process, the assumption is we will get better decisions out of that kind of governance structure. I'm sorry, I'm also realizing I am remiss in not recognizing Mr. Patrick Moran, who I believe is back here and is a member of the, the task force as well. Some of you may remember from the, the efforts during the legislative process for more specific entities to be members of the task force. The decision was made at the time not to require participation from labor, but the mayor chose to use one of his five spots to appoint Mr. Moran to the task force, where it, you know, is his, both his charge and his, his pleasure to represent the interests of the, I believe--
Six hundred?
Yeah. The, the hundreds of, of workers in the city's water and wastewater system that are represented in, in various unions.
I appreciate that response. Just one follow-up question. As far as liability for any types of injuries that would happen with, because this is a regional authority, where would the jurisdiction align? Would it be in the city or the county, or would it be a collective between the two? And I assume that would go under the governance, but I just wanted to be clear.
I'm trying to decide whether or not to go for it on fourth and three, or just punt this one and back to the administration. My, I'm a Ravens fan, so I'll go for it. The, the, what I'll, what I'll say is that a regional water authority, if that was what we recommended and that was what we ended up with, they would cover that liability. That, that entity, how they do that--
How they do it.
That's, that's, that's far past what we're looking at today. I don't know if they would self-insure like the city does, if they would have a master insurance policy. That's, that's a detail that the task force isn't going to get into.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, and I should also, I just want to, like, I keep reinforcing that people can come to the public hearing and, and give their comment. I do also want to reinforce that you can send written testimony if you can't come. You can send written testimony to the email address that's on the website. Just Google Regional Water Governance Task Force, and that'll take you to either the city or the county site. And the staff collects those pieces of written testimony and will share them with the task force members.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Comptroller. So I just wanted to double down on the stormwater comments. As you know, since 2018, been working with residents along the Frederick Avenue corridor. And one of the things that's come up in those, with quarterly meetings with all stakeholders and a multitude of city agencies, and one thing that the residents have raised multiple times, and that DPW staff has even acknowledged that, you know, that these jurisdictional lines are invisible and don't really have any meaning in reality when it comes to where floodwaters are going to come. And we, you know, every time there's a significant flood event in an elegant city, that seems to get all the coverage and resources dumped that way, but we are along the same roadway and along the same watershed, and do not get, you know, nearly the same response from the media. I have been happy with the response from the agencies and their consistent follow-up. The thing that's come up multiple times outside of that is, you know, residents ask like, well, how are you all working with the county? Or, you know, Howard County, Baltimore County, what does that look like? And the answer is, the agencies all sort of, agency reps sort of look at each other like, I don't want to respond, because it's clear that there is no communication. And so while they may be taking measures to prevent flooding in Howard County and Baltimore County, which are legitimate, we don't really know, like, how will this impact our own plans? Are we competing for the same funding resources to respond to these kind of things? And these are legitimate questions that I share. And so it's clear that, like, more working together is needed, and I agree with that. And just would lift up that the intersectionality between, as you've acknowledged, stormwater, wastewater are often a reality for many residents, is the wastewater is backing up into their basement through stormwater channels potentially, or cracks in between. So just, just flagging that. The other thing to just lift up is, you know, I mean, I've been pretty vocal about my perspectives on a regional water authority and what that could mean for Baltimore, and just what we've seen in other jurisdictions, where you have unelected entities, and what that means for residents to be able to raise concerns, to hold that entity accountable, as well as the elected representatives that they put in office to hold these sort of entities accountable. And so would just lift up that I just think that that's something to, I don't really know what it should look like, but just knowing that accountability measures are important to not only us on the council, but to our constituents and to, my concern is that we put this entity in place that is even less responsive and accountable than the one we have. And I, you know, was disappointed to hear that the status quo was taken off the table, because I share my colleague's comments in that, like, well, things seem to be working better, so maybe we should just keep going this way. But I understand. I get it. And so just those are the two, weren't really questions, but comments, Mr. Chair, that I just wanted on the record.
So, yeah, I, well, first of all, I don't know if I've shared this with you before, but one of my favorite quotes from Antero Piattella, when I asked him about how the Sun editorial board was going to deal with a particularly finicky potential conflict of interest, he said, yes, yes, this is the dilemma before us. And, and, and that is one of the things that we, we struggle with in terms of, you know, any kind of governance structure has innate pros and cons. You know, if, if, if one governance structure was simply better than all the rest, everybody would just be using it. One of the things that people have complained a lot about over the last roughly 20 years is how water and wastewater rates just keep going up. It feels like every year they go up. And people are like, I'm spending three times what I spent on my water bill just, you know, 15, 20 years ago. Nobody, nobody complains about the fact that water rates did not go up substantially in the 20 years before that, because nobody's unhappy when things don't get more expensive. But if what that means is we underfunded the system for years and created deferred maintenance by doing so, and now we have to make up for it, people grumble, but they have to acknowledge that it makes sense. What, what I will point out is that, under the current governance structure, for all practical purposes, the mayor of Baltimore decides whether or not to raise water rates. That's, that, that decision, at the end of the day, is up to whoever is mayor of Baltimore that year. And so if you have an elected official who is desperately concerned about winning reelection and doesn't want to make people unhappy in any way, shape, or form, then you don't raise your rates, and that means you may not be properly funding your system. I say that because if we had, you know, to follow out the, the issue with the regional water authorities, the assumption with many regional water authorities is, they are people appointed by elected individuals, but they function as an accountability firewall, so that the board can do things and make people unhappy while the elected officials get to say, oh, that's the board, you know, I didn't do that. The board must have decided that it needed to be done. One option, if you want to avoid that concern, is you put the elected officials on the board, much like elected officials are on the Board of Estimates, and even though one of them has more votes than the rest, you know, all of them are on record voting for or against what needs to be done, or doesn't, as the case may be. That provides more direct accountability, but elected officials are also more likely to be biased against raising rates, even when the system needs more money to do what it's trying to do, like, for example, take care of the workers of the system. A lot of the concerns that we have right now about the working environment, we are just now making a big needed step in raising salaries for DPW employees. we are just now making, uh, a big needed step in raising salaries, um, for DPW employees that possibly could have been made, or maybe the better way to put it is, might not needed to have been made as one big thing if, for the last 50 or 60 years, we had always raised rates to match the needs of the system. So there are, there are pros and cons, and I really, uh, when I, when I keep saying, "I want you guys, I want people to, to chime in and give public input," I mean it because this is, you know, this is not something where there's a clear, "We should do this in front of us," and the more, uh, the more different perspectives that are willing to engage and be part of this conversation and help us to make this decision, the better.
Thank you. Councilman.
Yeah. Thank you. I have a couple more questions. Um, the, uh, um, Office of Equity just talked about the fact that, you know, with their, and, and in the resolution, we asked for making sure that there was an equity analysis of whatever recommendations come out. Um, it seems to me like some of that needs to sort of happen along the way as well. So what, do you anticipate that the task force will be doing this? Um, how, it's not in the scope of the, the consultant, so what is your recommendation there and how you plan as the chair to handle that piece?
Yeah, I, I would say this is less of a recommendation issue and just more of a "How do we figure this out?" kind of thing. This issue did come up at the first public meeting, and we did establish that, uh, in, in explicit equity analysis was not part of the scope for which the consultant was hired. Um, so they are looking to see how much of that work they can include in the fiscal analysis that they were already contracted to do. Um, but the reality is, this is a lot of work in a very short period of time, and they may simply not have the capacity to do the level of equity assessment that I think most, most people who care about one probably want a good one.
Right.
Um, and so a eh one that they can sort of scrape together on the side of everything else they're supposed to be doing might not even be what people really want anyway. So, um, what I would encourage is that this is a great opportunity for partnership, where if the council feels strongly enough about this, you know, having a real equity focus in our deliberations, and I want to be clear about that, there will still be the opportunity for whatever recommendation we make, we can recommend that that governance structure conduct an equity assessment when it's working out its operations. That's, that's, that's still something that we can do, but if you want the task force to have access to an equity assessment when we're making our, when we're doing our deliberations around what kind of governance structure we're going to recommend, um, then I would ask if you can get maybe the Office of Equity, or if, I, I'm going to try to say this with a straight face, if the council has the funding to hire an outside consultant to do that work parallel to the work we're doing, but quickly enough to get the final report to us before we make our deliberations, I'm going to be honest with you, that's a really tough ask, given the timing involved. I, I would have a hard time figuring out how, given our procurement process, we could even pick and hire a, an outside consultant fast enough to even know who they are before we would need that information, because we're going to start making real decisions. Well, technically, we're making a real decision next week, um, but we're going to be making the, you know, the draft recommendations. Is it the fourth or the fifth meeting?
Fourth.
For, yeah, which, and we're going to try to make the schedule big again. Yeah, so, yeah, the final fiscal analysis is November 1st. So that's a really tight timeline at this point to try to get a, a new, get an equity and assessment done before then. Um, I think what we will probably, as, as someone who would like to see an equity focus in this issue, I think probably the best thing we can really work towards is having the task force include the need for one in its recommendation moving forward.
I, I think that would be like the least, right? I mean, um, and I will have a discussion with OECR Director in terms of capacity to assist in this way. Um, it's a, it's a very, very important consideration, um, in these deliberations. So I think, um, so I'll, I'll, um, I'll take that on. My other question is about-
Councilman, can I tag on to that line of questions real fast?
Of course.
Um, Mr. Comptroller, do you know what is the reasoning for such a short timeline?
All right, that's more of a fourth and nine situation.
Okay.
Um, and I, and I just, just being very candid, I was not very involved in this issue during the legislative phase last session. I, I, you know, I heard about it after it passed, and I said to the mayor, "That's great, you know, this is a really important issue, you know, I, I, I hope you can make this work." But I wasn't involved in any of those negotiations, so I can't really tell you that.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, if the mayor's office-
Uh, Mr. Chair, could you, uh, repeat the question again, just so I can make sure-
The question was, do we know why there is such a short timeline for this, uh, commission to consider these, these factors?
Um, I know in a legislation, there is a, um, deadline for a report to be back to the governor's office, um, but if that's not good enough, I can try to research and get you, uh, some additional information.
Yeah, I think the, the thought here is, we, we, it sounds like we've got a couple of things that sound like they might take some time, that are probably really important to the, to the deliberations, that won't happen within this short amount of time. Not saying that we necessarily want to extend it, but, um, I think that really depends on what we're trying to accomplish and the given timeline we have to date. Um, if we're expecting that maybe the state legislature or the governor has some decision to make in this coming session for which they need this report in a certain amount of time so they can draft the bill, maybe that's it. But if that is not it, um, I'm, I'm curious just what, what the, what the big rush is, um, like, if there are different things that we as, you know, the respective counties can figure out, so far as the organization, independent of the state, um, the timeline may not necessarily be there in the same capacity. Councilman.
Yeah, thank you. That was, um, that was kind of where I was going with the next phase, which was, um, looking at, I would, I assumed that the timeline was such that there would be some state legislation coming out of this. That was my assumption, just in what happens with years of working in the General Assembly. Um, so, um, I guess, Mr. Comptroller, if, if, it, it may happen that way, it may not. Um, but do you anticipate that the council and the county, the county councils and the city council would, and technically we're a county in this regard, um, would have, would approve such a, um, structure if it ends up happening? Like, what do you see our ultimate role here in terms of, you know, I would imagine that we would all have to approve whatever ends up coming, but what does that even mean?
Um, thank you for the question. Uh, I, I, I had made a, I had made a point of mentioning at the first public meeting, um, as, uh, Director Luna put in the, um, presentation, that the task force's recommendations are not going to the General Assembly. They're going to the mayor, the Baltimore County Executive, and the governor. And, um, I, at the, at the risk of, um, going through all five of the major categories of governance systems, um, that we could look at, and, um, narrowing down to the three that we will most likely examine most closely, um, what I would say is that my understanding of them is that none of them require state legislation. That's not the same as saying state legislation could not enable one or more of them, um, but, uh, what I would say is that if we came up with a recommendation that did not require state legislation, then yes, the, that would mean that the cities are, or the city and the counties are working some new arrangement out amongst themselves. Now, this is where, yes, if it were, uh, a new set of MOUs, or, you know, inter-jurisdictional MOUs, then technically, no, the city council would not need to be involved. Those would go to the Board of Estimates, and those would just be the, essentially the mayor deciding that this is what we're going to do. Um, I would like to believe that the administration, um, is one that would seek openness and, um, and buy in for a situation like that, and so I'm sure there would be opportunities for the council to hold hearings, um, et cetera. But if the, the one structure, one category of structure that we're looking at that would definitely require council action would be if we recommended some type of regional water authority that would require changes to both the code and the charter. And so that would require legislation, um, and the council would definitely be a, a full governance partner in working through that, as I believe would be the case, um, in any of the other jurisdictions.
Uh, thank you. I have a question about the, the meetings coming up, um, and the availability of, um, multiple ways to participate. Um, I have not seen any of the materials in Spanish, um, and I don't know whether there will be simultaneous translation at the meetings. Uh, we, admittedly, in the council, we've only had one hearing where we had simultaneous translation. We will have another very soon. It's got to be planned out and strategic, um, but we do have communities, uh, that will be affected by this and should be able to participate. Um, so what is the plan for that outreach and for participation?
Yeah, I, I can take those questions too, and thank you, Chair, um, for the comments earlier. The, um, for public participation for the meetings, it's, uh, in-person meetings at the locations that you see on the screen. There's also a live streaming option as well, too, for anybody who can't make it, they can, they can listen in, um, and hear the deliberations, the discussion. Um, if they can't make it in person to provide public comment, that's why we have the, um, email addresses, both in the city and the county, established. They can submit in their written comments that way. Our staff is currently working to do, um, translation for, for the upcoming meeting schedule in various languages so that those can be out and, and into the public. Um, and we continue to work as best as we can to make sure we accommodate anybody for the meetings. Um, logistical issues, I'm just trying to get everything set up as quickly as possible. Um, if we can get translation services at those meetings, we can, but it's just one of those efforts that we continue to slightly try to work on and, and implement.
I would just, um, encourage in your materials that you could say, you know, if you need translation to, to email or to call or something, so that you at least know that somebody's coming that would need that translation.
Yeah, we're, we're currently working with a couple of groups right now to see if we can get that offer at the meetings.
Right. Also, that convey 911 group is pretty cool, the, um, that's doing the AI for 911, and I don't know if that's something that, I mean, that's something that I'm personally going to look into for the rest of all the agencies in terms of how to address, um, that particular issue. Um, but yeah, I just, I just think it's important from an outreach, uh, perspective. Um, and is there a reason why virtual option is not available for any of these meetings except for the last one, mostly because, uh, there's only two meetings in the city, two meetings in the county? Um, you know, there are, these are important issues, and so the people who will be able to go are those with a car.
Right.
Um, or to be able to take public transportation in our complicated system.
Yeah.
Uh, so what's the reason why there are not hybrid meetings?
Yeah, it's, it, it just centers around logistical challenges, so the room that we're currently sitting in has been retrofitted to be hybrid, right?
Correct.
Participation, both, um, in-person and virtually. The locations that we're using are not, and so we're doing our best to try to implement that technology at those locations. Um, the final two meetings as well will be completely virtual, and that's where the, the, the main votes in terms of recommendations or the final passage will be made as well, too.
And is the only way to provide test, pub, public input is, well, let me just change it this way. When there is a report that is submitted, will there be a public comment period on the recommendations?
The way we have, the way we ended up structuring it is there will be a draft report and recommendation, but by the fifth or right after the fifth. Um, and the, effectively, the spacing of time between the fifth meeting on November 16th and the final recommendation report on January 25th, that is effectively the public comment period on the report. So that's almost 45 days, um, that people will have to digest the draft report, and then after that, will vote on it with the opportunity to make last-minute revisions based on comments we get during that period. I, I will take the, um, the accountability for this. I didn't see the point of a public comment period after we approved the report, um, because we're not a decision-making body. We're just making recommendations and then, you know, a set of executives are going to go off and do something. So we wanted to get the maximum comment before we made our final recommendation.
Does that make a lot of sense?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, that makes a lot of sense, and, and you've given enough timeframe, just because those of us who've been in Annapolis know that we worked during the holidays, but there are the holidays there to, that are, um, you know, uh, in the middle there. So, yeah, I, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. It's fine.
Um, any further questions? Thank you. Uh, we're going to open up to public testimony. Um, so for those that wish to testify, uh, we'll grab the sign-up in the back. Uh, we'll afford two minutes, uh, to testify. Uh, for those that are joining us virtually, please use the raise hand function, and we'll acknowledge you. Um-
Thank you, Tony.
Uh, first up, we've got Antoinette Ryan Johnson.
Good afternoon, Chair Conway, and members of the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. My name is Antoinette Ryan Johnson, and I am the president of the City Union of Baltimore, a union of over 2,000, I'm sorry, 2,000 employees of Baltimore City, including over 400 who work for the city's water and wastewater utility system. I hope this committee, as it continues to call for transparency and answers from the Water Regional Govern, Governance Task Force, will bear in mind the impact, the uncertainty this issue has created to water utility employees. The business process model upon which the task force has relied to do, I'm sorry, to do much of its work sounded the alarm when analyzing staffing issues for the utility, noting that vacancies were higher than what, what, that, what, I'm sorry, higher than what is considered usual. There are a lot of unanswered questions- There are a lot of unanswered questions regarding the future of work within the water utility, which makes the staffing issue much, much worse. Questions like, if a new regional utility is to be created, what happens to hundreds, perhaps thousands, of employees working in the system now? Will they have to reapply for their jobs? Will they be covered by their union's contract with the city? Or will their unions be decertified as representing them, and if so, will they have to recertify? What happens to the pensions and retirement plans for the employees who have been paying into these systems for years, some even decades? The City Council Committee has the power to get city employees some answers, and we hope the committee will continue to ask these important questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan Johnson. Next up, we've got Jamar Lloyd.
Lloyd.
Lloyd. Please, turn it on using the right button. There we go.
Good afternoon. My name is Jamar Lloyd, and I'm an organizer with Food and Water Watch. I'm here today representing our over 10,000 members in the Baltimore area. First of all, I want to thank Councilwoman Ramis for her resolution, as was the council at large for holding this hearing today. We just wanted to say very quickly, you know, being in this meeting today has made the task force seem like a sham. How can we make a recommendation without conducting proper racial equity assessments or without a legal analysis? Furthermore, how can we say that the city will remain in power yet not be reliable for any, you know, faults at the hands of the authority? Are there too many unanswered questions? I believe that this is a very rushed timeline for such a major decision. As we all know, this is the city, you know, our water and wastewater system is the city's biggest asset, and any change in governance will change protections put in place via laws such as the Water Accountability and Equity Act, as well as the question ballot E of 2018, which banned privatization. We do think that this council should oversee this process very closely, even as members of the public, to, you know, make sure that these protections remain in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Any other folks looking to testify who are here in person? Any folks joining us virtually that would like to testify, please feel free to use the raise hand function, and we will unmute you. All right, seeing no further testimony, testimony is concluded. Want to thank Mr. Comptroller, Mr. Chair, Mr. Man of Many Hats, joining us today for all the insights on how the commission is going and the scope and scale of what they're working on. I think it's really important that we, as a council, take our opportunity to weigh in. Want to thank all the agencies, especially Director of DPW right now, for, you know, the perspective and insight that he's provided. Any closing comments, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to thank the committee. It's been a long day of committee hearings, so I really appreciate our colleagues for staying for so long. And then also, you know, I'm looking forward to the next steps in this process. We are not, Mr. Chair, we're not, I was hoping not to vote this out today because we do want to have more hearings and have more of a discussion around what we're hearing in these, the, the task force meetings and how the, the council, I mean, if we're going to end up approving something, we need to know what it is and have been a part of it. And so that's a big, big thing that we need to, you know, figure out how we're going to do that. So I appreciate everybody's time today. Thank you.
Thank you. This hearing is in recess.